I'm just waiting. Good morning everyone and thank you for attending this council meeting. Which will set our budget and precept during the course of the meeting. We start with agenda item one, which is apologies for absence. I have received, we have received no apologies. So I'll move on to item two unless someone was just interrupt me there. Okay, item two declarations of interest. All members who believe they have a disclosable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at this meeting must declare that interest. And having regard to part three, paragraph 1.5 of the county council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is discussed. Save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider, having regard to part five, paragraph four of the code, whether such interest should be declared. And having regard to part five, paragraph five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed. Save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Now I just want to remind members of the email you were sent, which is that members, the monitoring officer has written to all members, reminding them of the dispensation from the Conduct Advisory Panel in item 10 on the agenda. Which is the Revenue Budget and Precept. And then it will be taken as read that all members who are council taxpayers in the administrative area of the county council have declared a DPI in this item. And similarly, it will be taken as read that all members with a personal interest in item 12, which is the Minerals and Waste Plan, by virtue of them being a member of another authority, have declared their interest accordingly. So there is no need for members to worry about those two items. I come now to the minutes. Item three. So we have the minutes of the meeting held on the 3rd of December 2020. I go through the page numbers as indicated on your agenda. Page seven, page eight, page nine, page 10, page 11, page 12, page 13 and page 14. All members are content with those minutes?
Agreed Chairman.
Agreed. Therefore I shall sign them. Thank you. The next item on the agenda relates to deputations. We have none. Item five, the chairman's announcements. Members, since our last meeting, I regret to advise with much sadness the deaths of County Councillor Keith Evans and Honorary Alderman Stuart Juniper. Councillor Evans represented the Ferum Worsash division since his first election in May 2005. Honorary Alderman Juniper represented the Drayton and Farrington division from 1976 until 1981 and again from 1985 to 1996. And I would also like to pay my respects to Councillor Stan Wade, who was a contemporary councillor with me on NFDC and who served with me on the shadow board when we set up the New Forest National Park Authority. Stan Wade's son Malcolm is a serving member of this council and our thoughts and conversations go out to him too. Would any member like to speak in respect of Councillor Evans and Juniper? And if you would do both at the same time, I would be grateful if you and me were to speak about both. Thank you. Members, please indicate. I have Councillor Woodward followed by Councillor Reid. Councillor Woodward.
Thank you very much Chairman. I'm really grateful to be able to speak regarding Councillor Keith Evans, who was a very dear friend and colleague to me for much longer in fact than he was a member of this county council, which he joined with me in 2005. But Keith joined Ferum Borough Council back in 1988 as my fellow ward councillor in Salisbury. So we'd worked together as friends and colleagues for over 30 years. Keith was a most dedicated member. We talk, I think fairly blithely in politics, about someone who is a safe pair of hands. Keith was very much that. He, within Ferum, held the planning brief, which I think anyone would probably view that as a bit of a poison chalice in a district planning authority, which is expected to deliver massive amounts of house building. Keith always presented most diligently all of his reports, took questions, he mastered his brief, whatever his brief was, and I know that was the same on the county council as well, with aplomb. And I hear somebody who is very, very much missed. Everybody will know that Keith had been very ill for a year, but sadly, that isn't what took him away. He went into hospital with a relatively minor condition before Christmas and sadly didn't come out again due to catching COVID-19, which is a terrible tragedy and probably brought home to me, you know, the first person, the first friend and colleague that I'd lost. So I know that many members will miss Keith. It is very difficult. I've got my rare forays into the Borough Council at the moment and passing his desk is not easy. So I'm really grateful Chairman that you've allowed me to pay tribute to him this morning. He will be very much missed.
Thank you very much Councillor Woodward for that heartfelt response. Councillor Reid, followed by Councillor Carter.
Yes, thank you Chairman. In paying tribute to Keith, he was my vice chairman on the Employment in Hampshire County Council Committee. And he was highly supportive, very diligent, as Shaun has already said, attending the briefing meetings as well as the actual meetings of the committee. He read his papers, he mastered his brief as Shaun has said, and he was one of those councillors who, if he said something, it was because he had something to say. And I found him an excellent and supportive vice chairman and he will be deeply missed.
Thank you Councillor Reid. Councillor Carter followed by Councillor Glenn.
Thank you Chairman. Well, I'll speak briefly about Keith Evans, who I will really miss. Keith and I had served for the last six years our own group administration, Keith as the Treasurer and myself as the Secretary. And I really did value the discussions I had with Keith. Now Keith served on five county council committees, two as chairman and the other three as vice chairman. So he really had an outstanding commitment to the county council. He had been quite seriously ill and I had a number of discussions with Keith last year. Sorry, there's some feedback here. I had a number of discussions with Keith last year about the committees he was serving on. And invariably, in spite of his illness and the discomfort he may have had, he honoured his commitments, driving to Winchester on a number of occasions. He really was a dedicated servant to the county council and he will be really missed. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Glenn followed by Councillor McAvoy.
Thank you very much Chairman. It's very rare for me to actually comment on a county council that has deceased. But I'll make an exception in the case of Keith Evans. Keith was my deputy chairman on Policy and Resources for many years. And I made a few comments at the last meeting and I will say that I'm going to miss him very, very much. He was a real safe pair of hands. He had an extraordinary sense of fair play. You could trust his opinions. He was a good critical friend. He brought a lot of good ideas to the Policy and Resources Committee. And this was basically between meetings, which is really important. He always attended, both all the meetings and all the pre-meetings. And I always looked him for advice. He was very good at giving advice in the middle of a meeting when it got tricky. So basically I'd like to finish by paying tribute to his work on scrutiny. And I'm quite certain that all of us will miss him very much. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor McAvoy followed by Councillor Collett.
Yes, thank you very much Chairman. I don't want to say very much other than that I've worked with Keith for a couple of years now on the Audit Committee and I didn't really know him terribly well prior to that. But I was really quite impressed with his kind and gentle guiding manner. And I'm grateful that he has sort of helped me understand more about the Audit Committee and I very much respect everything that he's taught me. I'll just say one word about Councillor Juniper, who I never knew. Nevertheless, he was one of those councillors who was instrumental in saving Cowshot Activities Centre, which of course is very dear to my heart. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Collett.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, I won't repeat what people have said about Keith Evans, except to say that as an opposition member, I always found him a very fair vice chair of the Policy and Resources Committee. To the point that he recognised that issues should be examined across the board and he would look around to see if I wanted to speak or any of my colleagues did as well. There was never any trickery with Keith. He was very, very straight in that respect and he was a good chair of the Audit Committee. It's been very sad over the last year to observe him in meetings visibly unwell. And you hate seeing any colleague suffering in the way that he clearly was. And it just seems so wicked that having fought his way through all of that, to then be got by COVID when he was in hospital. So it's a very sad outcome for Keith there. And of course, I'm sure we all know quite a few people who've died of COVID over the last year. But this is the first time it's been a fellow county councillor who's been hit. And that of course comes home to all of us. I'm probably one of the few people around who remembers Stuart Juniper. And he lived long enough that when he eventually passed, very few of us do remember him. And in some ways, that's a rather good thing. But I do remember, as Councillor McAvoy has already mentioned, the role he played in saving Cowshot. And I was very impressed with that at the time because that didn't make him universally popular with his colleagues. Chairman, if you don't mind, I would like to just say a few words on Stan Wade, who you mentioned in the introduction. Yes. Stan I have known since the 1980s. He was a lovely man. And it's not surprising, knowing his principles and the sincerity and enthusiasm of his actions, that his son and indeed his grandson have followed him into active service community. All sharing those same values and principles that Stan encapsulated in everything he did. So I was very sad to hear of his passing too. Thank you Chairman.
Councillor House followed by Councillor Chigwin.
Thank you much Chairman. And just a few words on Keith Evans because sadly I didn't know Stan. I'm almost surprised I didn't, although his son of course is known to us all. I only knew Keith Evans through the River Hamble Harbour Board as well as the Audit Committee. And perhaps one bit of characteristic that hasn't really emerged through discussion so far this morning and the commentary is Keith's wit. Because he had a twinkle in his eye that was always there in a present. And you could never quite tell which bit of the wit was going to come out next in terms of his commentary. Also, just to give a different side of it of character, some years back, I used to live quite close to one of his neighbours. And he would turn up occasionally on Saturday afternoons dressed in full football kit, waiting to go to the match. So perhaps a different side to the man that many of us would have experienced at Hampshire County Council, but we'll miss him.
Thank you. Councillor Chigwin followed by Councillor Benison. Councillor Chigwin. I think you're still on mute.
I hope you can hear me. It wouldn't unmute. Thank you Chairman. I don't wish to repeat everything that's been said other than to agree with all the words. Particularly Keith was a lovely man. I think from our side across the political divide, we had great respect for him. Like Councillor Collett, I'm one of the few councillors who served with both Stan Wade and Stuart Juniper. Stan I remember particularly as a dedicated councillor in the New Forest, as you rightly said Chairman. And he also had a very empathious sense of humour. He was always a joy to be with and when he spoke, he was one of those you listened to. And deeper sympathies to Malcolm and all the family. He was a fine councillor. As indeed was Stuart Juniper. Stuart, for those who don't know, was first elected way back in 1974. He served, I believe, 30 years on the county council until Portsmouth became a unitary authority and he also served there. I think he was actually made an Alderman of Portsmouth even still while he was a Hampshire County councillor, before he was a Portsmouth one, which must be quite rare. He was a lovely man. He was one of a generation. When I joined this council in 85, there was a particular generation of Conservatives at that time. Potentalist in a way, but people who were in it for absolutely the right reasons. Generally had distinguished business careers and then came on to this council and served with great distinction here. Stuart in particular, I remember, had enormous knowledge in the education field. He did a tremendous amount for education across Hampshire and Portsmouth in particular. And to think that he served for so long is a tribute in itself. And on two different authorities will be very much missed. He was described in the news as a generous, thoughtful and kind individual and I think that sums him up to a T. And certainly someone who I remember with great affection and great respect. Just before finishing, can I also mention Frank Rust, who I don't think was mentioned in the introduction, but another former councillor who also sadly died during the time since we last met. And again, was a councillor who worked really hard for his community. I think all the names we've mentioned today Chairman have one thing in common or two things in common. Firstly, they were respected right across the political divide. Some of us would never achieve that aim, but they certainly did. And secondly, they served the community with huge distinction and were on this council and other councils for all the right reasons. And it's good that we can pay tribute to them today Chairman. And I certainly send my sympathies to their families, but I remember them as I say with affection and great respect. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you Councillor Chigwin. Are there any other members who wish to speak about either of these gentlemen? Fine. Okay, I'm going to... I'm getting another message. Councillor Still, do you wish to speak? Councillor Still, you're on mute. Sorry Councillor Still, we're getting quite bad feedback. I'm sorry Councillor Still, we're getting feedback. Are you able to speak without the microphone? Okay, while someone tries to sort out Councillor Still, could I go to Councillor Wade? Councillor Malcolm Wade.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. It's very unusual for members to speak in tribute of a council or another authority. It's also very unusual for a relative of that to be on this, a past councillor to be on this council. So I'd like to thank you and the other members for those kind words you said about Stan. And I have no doubt that he, like the other members that we have sadly lost, all will work, and no doubt, they all work for the community, the best they do for the community. So thank you everybody for that.
Thank you. And our best wishes to you and your family, Councillor Wade. Well, I'm still going to try Councillor Still. I seem to have lost Councillor Still. Give it a moment, see if she's able to come back on. I can see your hand up Councillor Still, but I have not got your picture or your sound. I'm sorry, I'm going to leave you Councillor Still because we're just not getting through to you. Someone will be in contact with you from the IT department to try and rectify whatever the communication problem is. Now councillors, normally if we were in the council chamber, we would stand for a minute or so and bow our heads as a mark of respect to our fellow colleagues who have so recently died. I want you to imagine for a moment that that is more or less what is happening. I'm going to ask you to bow your heads in silence and I will count out 30 seconds or so and then we will resume this meeting. So for the next 30 seconds or so, could you please bow your heads and just be silent as a mark of respect to our former colleagues. We'll resume now with my chairman's announcements. I haven't been out and about much, as you have gathered, because there hasn't been much out and abouting going on, but I gather that from April or May, things will resume and it might well then be that I'm able to represent you at various charity meetings and other events that are likely to occur in the summer. Or anyway, whoever is able to as chairman of the county council. I've got to announce a few awards and I'm very pleased that I can do this, some accolades and some awards. First of all, in the Environment, Transport and Economy section, we have the following. In October 2019, DEFRA commissioned an independent review of the arrangements for determining responsibility for surface water and drainage assets. The review was carried out by David Jenkins, supported by the Flood and Water Management Team. The review was published at the end of last summer and is currently being considered by government ministers. Of the recommendations, 12 were accepted immediately. The review includes the following acknowledgement by DEFRA, and I quote, "I have been greatly assisted in this review by officers of the Flood and Water Management Team of Hampshire County Council, to whom I am most grateful. I am most grateful to Hampshire County Council for providing this support to Vicky Westhoff and, who leads the team, and to Jemima Phillips and Mike Derry, who have worked with me on this review." End of quote. So it's nice that our council has been mentioned in dispatches by government who recognise us. Also, I should mention that Rachel May, our Rachel May, won the Construction Apprentice of the Year Award at Southampton Solent University on the 9th of February 2021. Now in Adults Social, in Adults Health and Care, four staff from the care section have committed, sorry, have completed their overseas nurse conversion and now have their nursing and midwifery council pins. They are Angela Joseph from Forest Court, Renjus George from Forest Court, Daisy Daniel from Emsworth House, Lindsay Vargis from Hawthorn Court. And the following were Adults Health and Care Transformation Leadership Programme participants. Mark Allen, Ian Cahill, Samantha Davenport, Amanda Jordan, Joe Lockhart, Jason Norham, Stuart Otterside and Tracey Marie Williams. And the following apprenticeships were achieved in Adults Health and Care Rehabilitment Services. Imogen Wright, Joel Rush, Gemma Peterson, Claire Rocha, Thomas Meredith and Anna Brown. And that ends my announcements for today. We move on to item six, which is the leader's report and the leader of the council will now address us.
Thank you, Chairman and councillors. First of all, I'd like to add my own condolences to the families of Keith Evans, all Honorary Alderman Juniper and councillor Rust. I have written a personal letter to Keith's widow and I'd also like to associate myself with all the remarks that Sean made that knew him very well. He is a sad loss. Let me move on straight away to the pandemic. Since we last met, we've had three further waves of the, further waves of the virus. And of course, the present lockdown. More encouragingly, we now have a very important and significant vaccination programme, which as far as I can see, is going incredibly well indeed. And finally, this week, we've had a roadmap for recovery. I can tell the council that the county, together with all its partners, both in the public and private sectors, have worked well together to reduce the spread of the virus to the extent that our infections have been consistently below the national average and that the vaccination programme has gone very well indeed. Alongside it, we have now established our own community testing partnership, as well as successfully dealing with an outbreak of the South African variant in Bramley. I recently wrote to all our staff, thanking them for all they've done over the past year to keep the council running and to fight the virus. I would like to take this opportunity to extend those thanks to all our partners that have worked so well with us. However, at this stage, we must not drop our guard. We must continue to follow the rules to ensure that the present lockdown is the last. Looking ahead, we will need to continue to work together to revive the economy in Hampshire and in particular, help the retail and hospitality sectors rebuild their businesses. When schools reopen in the next two weeks, this process of recovery will have started and I'm very pleased that new arrangements being put together to allow families to visit elderly relatives in care homes. I think this was one of the most saddest parts of this pandemic, where so many relatives of loved ones were not able to see them during their last days or indeed months of life. Could I also make a point about those councillors that are retiring in May? This will be their last council meeting and I'm very conscious, under normal circumstances, that we would have got together and met up on that basis. What I propose to do, when we are able to do so, bearing in mind the lockdown, we will arrange an event where all retiring councillors, regardless of party, are present so that we can officially say goodbye to them. I can't tell you when that will be, but I do believe it's important to do that because I think if you're like me, one of the things that one is increasingly missing with this pandemic carrying on, probably much longer than many of us expected, is that social contact with each other. I think at the beginning of the pandemic, the new experience of doing so much online as we're doing today was almost exciting and a change and trying to wrestle with the new technology. If you're like me now, I'm increasingly missing that social contact in person with all of you, again, regardless of party. And therefore, for those that are retiring, we must at least have any occasion to say goodbye when we can all meet again. And finally, may I thank all my fellow councillors, regardless again of party, for the way you've assisted in the fight against the virus and the future, I know you will help greatly in your own ways, in your divisions and in the county, to help with the recovery when it comes. Chairman, that completes my opening remarks. My leader's report.
Thank you councillor Mads. Item seven on the agenda relates to questions submitted in accordance with standing order First question is from councillor Steve Foster. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the executive member for Economy, Transport and Environment. Could the executive member please provide a summary of the extra Covid funding received from government allocated to ETE, his area, along with an overview of how the council is using the monies and reviewing the performance?
Thank you. Councillor Rob Hamby is the executive member for Economy, Transport and Environment, as well as being deputy leader of the council. Councillor Hamby, could you respond please?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman, and thank you to councillor Foster for his question. The grant for the first tranche of the Emergency Active Travel Fund, or the EATF, was 863,000 and that was all revenue. This delivered over 40 temporary highway schemes to aid social distancing and support businesses. A couple of the schemes have since been removed, including the one in Hart District Council, that was a sponsored scheme in Fleet Town Centre. The second tranche of the Active Travel Fund received more recently amounted to just over 2.6 million capital and just under 700,000 on revenue, so just about, just under 3.3 million pounds. So this is to be spent on a number of schemes to improve walking, cycling facilities throughout Hampshire and these are categorised into four main themes, plus the school streets, which we've all spoken about recently. So that's transforming high streets, enabling cycling and walking for local journeys, strategic corridors and innovation for transformation and previously mentioned the school streets trial scheme. The tranche two schemes are currently at the beginning of public consultations with some mixed views already coming in on prominent schemes and we've got some in Winchester and in Romsey, for example. Performance monitoring of any schemes implemented would be a really important part of this work, including assessing the effectiveness, including take-up, maintenance and the management costs of traffic impacts. The only other Covid grant that specifically funded for ETE is the Covid Bus Services Support Grant Restart and Mouthful, the CBSSG grant. The county council had just over 1.3 million in payments up to November 2020 and these funds provided by the government have helped to maintain services and keep operators in businesses during the, in business during a period of greatly reduced passenger numbers. Bus services are an important aspect of our current and future transport plans and operations and maintaining a healthy and competitive bus sector is therefore particularly important. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
You're on mute, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. I'm being a good boy, but then I'm being a bad boy. Councillor Foster, do you have a supplementary to that question?
Just a brief one, I may, Chair, to drill into that last point, please councillor Hamby, which is on the bus companies. I mean, the support we've given has been tremendous and I just wondered what the working relationship was like with the bus companies themselves and whether we would see any developments over the next few months as we come somewhat out of Covid.
Okay, to answer, Mr Chairman, yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. I mean, our relationship with the bus companies is excellent. I meet with all, with the three MDs of our bus companies on a regular basis and I can say they were extremely pleased with us as an authority, that we came out very quickly and announced that we would continue to support them in the ways we have been and that gave them the certainty, if you like, to understand how they could go forward and we will continue to do that. So over the next coming months, we will continue with that funding that we have provided for them. Clearly, once we get to the end of June and we have to understand where the government's support will then potentially end, we need to have further conversations with them, how we continue to support them. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Hamby. The next question is from councillor Andrew Gibson to the leader. Councillor Gibson?
Thank you, Chairman. Regarding concerns for the occupants of the proposed asylum seekers camp at Barton Stacey, what discussions have there been between Hampshire County Council and the Home Office? And can you explain what could be the implications for the provision of services by a county council?
Councillor Keith Mads, the leader.
Councillor Gibson, thank you for your question. What I can tell you is that the Home Office is considering the temporary use of this military defence land at Barton Stacey under the Emergency Planning Regulation to house up to 500 single male asylum seekers. Following the Home Office briefing in November, I subsequently raised a series of concerns with the Minister for Immigration, including matters relating to the local community, planning highways and the environment, and not least with regard to the welfare of the asylum seekers themselves. I also raised the matter of cost and I was assured that there would be no independent cost to the council, that any cost that did occur would be paid by the Home Office. We continue our dialogue with the Home Office, together with other interested parties, local MPs and the Test Valley District Council. And we were meant to be having a meeting earlier this week with the Home Office, but this was cancelled at the last minute. I received a note the day before yesterday from the Home Office saying the following. As part of the ongoing local area planning activities, the ecology survey has now been initiated and this will form part of these assessments, which can conclude consulting Natural England and undertaking a habitats regulation assessment, a transport assessment and a stage one road safety audit. These reports will help inform our decision on whether to continue with the site.
You're on mute, Councillor Kendall. It is the sign of our times, you are on mute. Councillor Gibson, do you have a supplementary question?
And only to say that the residents have asked me to thank the leader for his continuous support over the last few months. Obviously, they're terribly concerned, but they feel they're in good hands with councillor Mads. Thank you.
Well, I'm very grateful for that councillor Gibson. I think what is important is that we get this right and we don't rush into anything, bearing in mind what's happened at various sites in Kent. And I think it is, the onus is on the Home Office to actually sort this particular problem out.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Frank Carpenter. Councillor Carpenter?
Thank you, Chairman. Would the lead member for Children's Services please give the council an update about the distribution of the 2.89 million pound Covid winter grant scheme allocation, which was awarded to this authority by the Department for Work and Pensions? For example, what range of organisations have applied for the grant and for what type of service provision? How have we ensured that the grant funding reaches the most needy areas and can we be assured that vulnerable children and those eligible for free school meals will continue to be provided for? Thank you.
Thank you. The executive member for Children's Services and Young People is councillor Patricia Stallard, who will answer this question. Councillor Stallard?
Thank you very much, Chairman. And also, I'd like to thank councillor Carpenter for the question and I'm sure that all members would be very, very keen to know how we have been able to support children in families who are suffering hardship during these extremely difficult times. Funding has been provided to all education settings, enabling over 109,000 meal vouchers to be issued to families for December and February school holidays, targeting those eligible for free school meals, but also going beyond this. For example, helping families who may be struggling with fuel and food costs, but who may have only recently fallen into hardship. Funding for vouchers has also been provided to early help providers, health visiting and domestic abuse services, in order to help the maximum number of vulnerable families. Several community pantries have already opened up across the county, with a further seven due to be opened by the end of this month. seven due to be opened by the end of this month, and they are located in areas where there is evidence of greatest need. In addition, I granted 100,000 pounds to the Citizens Advice Bureau, and they have been able to provide financial support to families for fuel bills, and they have also issued, I believe at the present time, 72 slow cookers to those families who are without the basic cooking facilities, and I believe there are still more slow cookers available for families who have no other means of cooking. Working through the local children's partnerships and the community and voluntary service network, over 88,000 pounds of community grant awards have been made to schools, charities, and community organisations, primarily delivering food support through Hamprous Food Packages and Meal Clubs. A full list of grant awards has been published on the Connect for Communities website, and applications continue to be received and funded. Over 12,500 spaces were funded for free school meal eligible children to attend holiday activity and food schemes during the February half term. And planning is already underway to deliver similar schemes for Easter, summer, and Christmas holidays in 2021, providing continued support to free school meal eligible children. So to summarise, in total, a total of 2.18 million pounds of the grant has now been spent, and plans are already in place to allocate the remainder of the grant before the deadline of the 31st of March this year. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Stalard. councillor Carpenter, do you have a supplementary question?
No, I don't. Thank you for that comprehensive answer, councillor Stalard. Thank you.
The next question is from councillor Graham Burgess. councillor Burgess?
Thank you, Chairman. When will Hampshire County Council Highways Department adopt the new Daedalus Spine Road, which has been complete for over a year?
That question will be answered by the Executive Member for Economy, Transport and Environment, councillor Humby.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Yeah, thank councillor Burgess for his question. And councillor Burgess, we know we've had quite a bit of correspondence on this over previous months. I think my last response to you was on the 25th of January, and you will know that, you know, we have been trying to do this and adopt this, but the land is owned by Homes England and by Fermanborough Council. So it's actually not in our gift to do that, because we don't actually own the land. So what we need to do is, and we have been trying from Hampshire's point of view, but we need Homes England and Fermanborough Council to come back to us with a conclusion of the deed of completion to do that. So all I can do is ask that councillor Burgess speak to his colleagues in Fermanborough Council and Homes England to help us conclude this process. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Burgess, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do, Chairman. I mean, this road was paid for by the LEP to, you know, improve the development of the Daedalus Enterprise Zone. It's mostly in my division, and I just ask that Hampshire County Council, in simple terms, bang the heads of Homes England and Fermanborough Council together, after all their leader is presenting today, resolve these issues and open this much-needed road. Thank you.
Mr Chairman, thank you. Well, I'm not sure I should be banging heads together, but we have officers and the teams have been negotiating with them to try and speed up this process, so maybe I'll let councillor Burgess do the head-banging, and hopefully he can help the process, Mr Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. We have councillor Jane Warwick, your question?
Yes, thank you very much, Chairman. My question is to councillor Reed. I was very pleased indeed to hear the positive news about the government climate change grant to Hampshire County Council of just under 30 million to improve the energy efficiency of our maintained schools and buildings. I just wanted to ask how quickly can residents then expect to see the installation of solar panels and double-glazing windows on these schools, and how will these upgrades be prioritised? Thank you.
Yep. Well, the Executive Member for Commercial Strategy, Human Resources, and Performance is councillor Stephen Reed, and he will answer this question.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you to councillor Warwick for asking this question. It gives me chance to give praise where praise is due, and that's to Felicity Rowe and her department, especially Steve Cloy within it, because when the government said to councils, please put in for grants, we had grants, that, applications that could be taken off the shelf and submitted. The government wants the money spent quickly, and that's exactly what we're going to do. The works will be happening at pace during this year, as a condition of the grant from the government. Our aim is to maximise the best weather that occurs between spring and the autumn, and it's anticipated that, subject to the site surveys and contractor resources, that work will commence next month and April, and complete around the end of September. So we are tackling this at pace. The works are going to be very extensive, with over 350 sites receiving improvements, and they'll be divided into phases and packages of work, which will be placed with a number of different contractors to spread the load and manage the risk. Projects will be sequenced on the basis of scale, ease of access, and available resources.
Thank you. councillor Warwick, do you have a supplementary question?
Just, thank you, Chairman, just a very small follow-up, really, and I can just say how positive this news is. Could councillor Reed ensure that members are told locally when one of their schools is due to be refitted, because it's news that we would want to share with our communities if possible? Thank you.
Chairman, that's an excellent suggestion, so I'll pass that on to the officers and ask that that happens.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Jackie Branson. councillor Branson?
Thank you, Chairman. In view of continued school closures, can you tell me what Hampshire is doing and has been doing to support schools? Firstly, with their key worker provision. Secondly, to support disadvantaged children now and when shortly we hope they return to school. And C, and lastly, to ensure all pupils have access to quality remote learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
To the Executive Member for Education and Skills.
Thank you. The Executive Member for Education and Skills is councillor Roz Chad. councillor Chad?
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Branson for this question. Can I just first of all start off by saying I ask, schools have done an amazing job at staying open for our critical worker children and our vulnerable children throughout this latest lockdown period that we see ourselves in. Hampshire County Council continues to support schools and their pupils during the current lockdown period. All schools have made provision for the children of critical workers and for those children living in vulnerable circumstances. Currently, just over 25% of children are attending primary schools, and around 7% are attending secondary schools. Those percentages are about 4% higher than the percentages seen nationally in primary, and 2% higher than those in secondary. Children's Services track and promote the attendance of all children open to social care services. Social workers and schoolwork, schools work together to secure good attendance for vulnerable children, currently 11% higher than the national average at primary, and 4% higher than the national average at secondary schools. 11,200 IT devices have been delivered to maintain schools for the disadvantaged pupils that need them most. Additional devices have gone direct to academies. More are now on order following the most recent national expansion of this scheme. Finally, despite the best efforts of schools, families, and children's services, children will inevitably have had different experiences during the periods of lockdown. We await further information from central government, but the county council will work closely with school leaders to ensure that high-quality recovery curriculum is in place and not only addresses any learning gaps, but also ensures that children have access to high-quality support and learning opportunities that develop their social and emotional skills. Thank you.
councillor Branson, do you have a supplementary question?
No, I don't, but I would like to echo councillor Chad in saying what an amazing job our teachers and the support staff have been doing in our schools, and they certainly deserve our praise and thanks.
Thank you. The next question is from, I'm so sorry, councillor Chad.
Sorry, thank you councillor Branson. I will pass that on to our team and get them to pass it on to the schools. Thank you for that.
My apologies, councillor Chad. Thank you. The next question is from councillor Roger Huckstead.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. Will the Executive Member, given that on the 5th of February, members were briefed on COVOTS, collaborative robots, state what other technologies have been deployed by the department to augment the delivery of services to service users while enabling frontline social workers to perform their duties more efficiently and easily? Thank you.
Thank you. The Executive Member for Adult Social Care and Health is councillor Liz Fairhurst, who is not a robot. councillor Fairhurst?
Thank you, Chairman. And councillor Huckstead, before I answer your question, could I just take this opportunity to give a public vote of thanks to all the people who work in adult services? The sheer dedication and perseverance in the most difficult of circumstances is truly awe-inspiring, and we should be immensely proud of all their efforts. May I, Chairman, on behalf of the full council, register our thanks to the adult social care and health staff? Now councillor Huckstead, back to your question. Hampshire Adults Health and Care initiated our Technology-enabled Care, TEC for short, partnership in 2013, with the primary purpose of integrating the use of technology into normal social care practice and delivery. In most cases, these technologies are devices that alert monitoring and response centres, sensors that monitor movement and falls or incidences of episodes like epilepsy. However, we also use more advanced technologies, like apps on smartphones, phones, brain and hand, which supports people with autism and is a brilliant app for them, GPS devices to help find people when they're out and about and need help and support, tablets, and other mobile devices to help people keep connected to one another, and including, of course, the use of the Amazon Echo. All throughout, our focus is on supporting individuals to live independently, and where possible, reduce more costly and intensive services the council needs to deliver. Often, our tech services are used to support home care, and we've been able to positively reduce the numbers, the hours of home care the council has to purchase by using tech, while maintaining the quality and capacity of the sector.
Thank you. councillor Huckstead, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please, Mr Chairman. I wondered what other technologies are lined up to achieve the same aims of efficiency and ease for our staff and service users?
Thank you, councillor Huckstead. We are continually reviewing both our approach to tech and the opportunities to use and deliver new technologies. The switch to digital from analogue that is rolling out nationally offers new opportunities to explore predictive technologies, and our leading role in the robotics and care field means we are able to scan the horizon effectively with our partners. In addition, new policy developments, like the Health and Care White Paper, point to new opportunities to work alongside health and other sectors in developing joint services which will support vulnerable residents and patients through the developing ICS structures.
Thank you. councillor, do you have a supplementary question? Thank you. councillor Jonathan Glenn, next.
Thank you very much, Chairman. There is increasing evidence that special needs adults, especially those with learning difficulties, are very vulnerable to contracting COVID-19. The Office for National Statistics has published data that this cohort is 3.7% at least more likely to die than average. Are we at Hampshire giving enough consideration to protecting this group and to offering early vaccinations as a priority? And councillor Fairhurst, a lot has happened in the last three weeks, and I am aware that I'm not pushing against an open door.
So the Executive Member for Adult Social Care and Health, as I mentioned a moment ago, is councillor Fairhurst. councillor Fairhurst, could you respond, please?
Yes, thank you councillor Glenn, and thank you for your question. The reply I had ready to give you today has actually been superseded by the excellent news we received yesterday. All people with a learning difficulty in Hampshire will be vaccinated as a priority group from Monday, the 1st of March, and we anticipate that this will be complete by the end of March. Carers of learning disability clients will also be offered the vaccine. And yesterday, talking to some colleagues from the NHS, they are busy looking at all our vaccination centres to make sure that they are user-friendly for people with autism or learning difficulties. So hopefully, this will go smoothly and quickly. Thank you.
councillor Glenn, do you have a supplementary question?
Not a question, but I'd just say how delighted I am that the county council has reacted so speedily to the legislation, and we all have a lot to thank to Jo Wiley for the publicity that she's brought. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. The next question is from councillor Jackie Porter.
Thank you, Chairman. In view of the very low income collected from children's transport to school before their compulsory school age, the pandemic creating uncertainty of attendance for schools, the resultant additional car journeys made by parents, and the county council's desire to reduce Hampshire's council carbon footprint, would the county council reconsider their decision and stop charging parents for the school bus journey for reception children onwards for the academic year 21/22?
Okay, councillor Stalard, the Executive Member for Children's Services and Young People, will answer this question.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you councillor Porter. I think it's important to remind members that legislation is in place, which requires all local authorities to provide local authority-funded home-to-school transport for children of compulsory school age, that is, from the start of the term following a child's fifth birthday. The decision to change the county council approach to providing local authority-funding transport to children not yet of compulsory school age, that is, four years old and attending reception classes, followed an extensive consultation. Its removal was part of a move towards amending the council's home-to-school transport policy, so that the county council continues to provide services in line with the legislative requirements and the Department for Education's guidance. We already have a home, we already have home-to-school transport costs of 32 million pounds per year and rising, and we simply cannot afford to further add to these costs. Making savings where we can is vital in protecting critical children's services for Hampshire's most vulnerable children. The children's services department face unprecedented budget challenges, and making efficiency and cost savings wherever they are possible is vitally important if we are to maintain quality services for our young people who are in need of our support and care. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you councillor Stella. councillor Porter, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, please. The county council currently gives free transport for that group for free school meal children only. If you receive universal credit, you are not automatically entitled to free school meals. So would the county council consider removing this charge completely, or at least remove the burden for the children of families receiving universal credit?
Thank you very much for that supplementary question, councillor Porter. I think I had this morning already outlined the county council's position and my department's position in relation to charges for home-to-school transport. We We will be complying and continue to comply with the legislation whereby we will fund the transport from the start of the term following a child's fifth birthday.
Thank you councillor Stelod. That ends the questions, understanding order 16.1.1. We come now to part one items, matters for decision. The first is agenda item eight, appointments. As you will see from the agenda item eight, there are no appointments listed, but the leader, can you confirm that please?
I can, Chairman, I can confirm that there are no appointments proposed on this occasion.
Thank you. The next item is item nine, constitutional matters. To consider a report to the Cabinet seeking approval of constitutional changes to the allocation of executive functions in the responsibility for scrutiny of regulatory services, deputations of remote meetings and executive decision days and an amendment to contract standing orders. This will be introduced by the leader, councillor Keith Mans.
Chairman, councillors, most of these are fairly routine changes to our rules. The recommendations are in front of you and I would ask the council to approve these changes that were discussed previously at the Cabinet a couple of weeks ago.
Councillor House?
Yes, thank you Chairman. It's a question for the leader. The existing arrangements for virtual meetings cease on the 6th of May, as the report clearly says, and yet meetings in person are not allowable until June under the current government arrangements. Can the leader explain what will happen when we're no longer allowed to meet virtually and also we're not allowed to meet in person?
I understand that the government are bringing forward legislation to cover that specific point. It is a very good point councillor House, it has been brought to the attention of the appropriate authorities because you're right, it does leave us in limbo, but I can assure you the government are aware of that.
Thank you Chairman.
Any other questions from any other member? If we proceed to vote on the recommendations by electronic vote, and you should see in a few moments, a pop up on your screen, and there it is for item nine. So you either press the four against or abstain button and then you press submit. Do you please vote now?
Chairman, I can confirm we have 95% in favour.
Yes, I can see we have 64 votes and as you say, vast majority in favour, so I accept that recommendation and I move on into item 10. Item 10 is to consider the recommendations of Cabinet for the revenue budget and precept from 2021 to 2022 and the capital programme for the same, well for the period from 21/22 up to 23/24. Now, there's a debate sequence and the timings and the sequence for this item have been set out on the final page of your agenda and you might want to just turn to that to check that you have it, sets out who speaks first and for how long and so on. Should just mention, in respect of the first item, there will be a combination of speakers, two speakers with no limit on the overall time for those two speakers. So I would ask councillor Keith Mans, the leader, to introduce this item. I understand you will be assisted by the executive member for commercial strategy, human resources and performance councillor Stephen Reed. At the end of this debate, there will be a vote, a recorded vote, which will be shepherded by the chief executive, so over to you councillor Mans.
Thank you Chairman and councillors. As the chairman indicated, I'll be making a few general remarks at the beginning of this debate and then I'll be handing over to councillor Reed for a more detailed analysis of the budget proposals. First of all, I'd just like to look back. This last year has been one of the hardest, if not the hardest financially, to manage in this council's history. However, our strong financial position at the start, together with our two-year budget cycle, have greatly helped us weather this particular storm of COVID-19. We have been able to use our free reserves or some of our free reserves to take action when needed quickly. A good example being our ability to passport the government grant for care homes to the care homes themselves before we actually received it ourselves. I would like to stress this point, quite often we're criticised for the size of our reserves. I can assure you that many other councils across the country would have been very welcome being in our position at the beginning and during this pandemic, when it was not at all clear exactly what the costs were going to be and how they were going to be paid for. The fact that we had reserves to deal with immediate problems associated with COVID-19 was definitely put us in a very strong position. And at the end of the financial year, our deficit on the budget that we'd set at the beginning was less than £5 million, well within the capacity of our reserves to cover. Again, I'd say this is not the case across the country. The future is again not at all predictable. We very much hope that the present lockdown will be the last, but there is no guarantee that there will not be a number of ongoing costs associated with COVID in the future. In particular, the level of collection of council tax and business rates following the pandemic is difficult to calculate, as is the level of support from central government to cover our ongoing costs of fighting the pandemic itself. And in this context, I do believe the cautious policy followed by the council, the chief executive and the treasurer was the correct one. At the beginning of this outbreak, we had no idea partly of what support we were going to get from the government and indeed the actual level of council tax receipts and business rates receipts we were likely to have. A policy of prudence and indeed caution, I think, was the right one. And I know that councillor House felt that it was a bit too cautious, but I have to say, the fact it was, has put us in a good financial position to deal with the immediate needs of COVID-19 and to point the way forward. In regard to specific proposals for the coming year, I would just say a couple of things before I hand over to councillor Reed. We will be using the £3 million new homes bonus directly to support Operation Resilience. We are very conscious that we do need increasing amounts of cash to support our programme of resilience in terms of the roads. And indeed, we will also be providing additional money from the Social Care Grant for children's services. And finally, we have allocated £1.2 million from the pay award to set aside for IT growth pressures. The capital programme is a very extensive one, amounting to almost three quarters of a billion pounds over the coming years. You tend to find it always looks as if we've been spending more in the past than we have in the future. That is simply because programmes tend to roll forward in the future and move to the right, but that is one of the largest, if not the largest, capital programme in the country. And as was said earlier, in answer to a question about the grant for, the grant under the environmental scheme set up by the government for double glazing in schools, that is a grant that will be spent nearly £30 million of it on providing double glazing in schools. It is a good example of our proactive way that we pursue government grants to support our capital programme. Bearing all this in mind, I will be asking the council today to agree a 1.99% increase in the council tax for the coming year, together with a further 3% to cover specifically social care in line with the government's recommendation. In addition, I would add, it is now particularly urgent that a long-term solution is found to the ever increasing cost of social care. I do not believe a long-term solution is simply to add a specific amount to the council tax each year under the guidance of central government. I do believe that central government have to come up very quickly with a long-term solution as how we look after the elderly population properly. And on that point, I'll hand over with your permission, Chairman, to councillor Reed to go into the detail of our proposals this morning.
Thank you leader, thank you Chairman. I've got some feedback, so I think I need the officers please to mute everyone and I'll...
Councillor Edgar, could you please ensure that you're muted? Thank you. Councillor Reed, proceed, I think you're all right now.
Okay, thank you. I'll start with some headlines, Mr Chairman. The proposals before us today are for a balanced budget in line with our legal obligations. The financial position at the end of this financial year is not as bad as we feared it might be. COVID has dominated everything, but the draw on our finances this year after government grants is now some £4.9 million as set out in the part one report. It could have been a lot worse. Final figures from billing authorities mean that we're in a position to add £4.7 million to the budget bridging reserve in 2021/22, which is most welcome. We have to build them back up. The government is permitting councils to raise their council tax as the leader has described, so I won't repeat those figures, but that equates to £64 for the year at Band D. In the current circumstances, really I defy any councils to state that it cannot use every penny it can raise to help the most vulnerable in our society and the pressures that they are facing. We are again having to plan on the basis of a one-year finance settlement. The government had intended to offer a three-year settlement, but COVID intervened. That means our officers have a much more difficult job of working on the budget again on the basis of assumptions for the longer term. Now, those are the headlines, now some commentary. I'd like to start, if I may, Mr Chairman, by thanking our officers and all of them. During the COVID crisis, every department has had to take special actions to react to it and then to keep record of the costs of those actions so that they can be reclaimed from the government. And that means that Carolyn Williamson and Rob Carr and their teams have had to receive in all that information and keep on a monthly basis putting in responses to the government saying how much we have been spending and how much we are claiming. That's created intense pressures, having to make forecasts and comply and supply vast quantities of information and manage the impact of this unprecedented crisis. And they got it right, they'd say they got it broadly right, I'm saying they got it right under the most difficult conditions. And I'm sure I speak for all members when I record our appreciation of our officers' efforts in these very difficult times. In the midst of this, it gives me great pleasure to record that our auditors, having requested a lot of extra information, have also unconditionally accepted our accounts and not every council can say that. Before COVID and the lockdown hit, members will be aware that we were operating on the basis of a two-year planning cycle and having to find £80 million in broad terms in each cycle to cater for the increases in demand for essential services for inflation and reductions in the real term value of government grants. Even though the focus has been on COVID this last year, that underlying truth remains unchanged. One unavoidable impact of COVID was initially to divert effort away from that programme of adjustments, but it has been resumed and it will become more critical as we go forward, especially in terms of timely delivery. I emphasise that, we're going to have to make those adjustments on time because we've eaten into our reserves. It will become more critical because our officers estimate a one-off impact on our finances in the medium term, currently at some £87 million, that's a big number. That impact is made up of costs that might not be fully reimbursed, savings not made whilst we've been concentrating on other things and income reductions expected to arise from the impacts of the lockdowns and the shocks that they have caused to the national economy. So forecasting during these unprecedented times has been very difficult and our officers have erred on the side of caution, as is entirely right. The final figures in the part one report in respect of collection fund losses results in a £3.1 million loss, which in the scheme of things, whilst a significant number, is a small forecasting variation. I'm sure members will agree that planning prudently has served the council well to date and that's not something that we should seek to change in the future. Regarding the £87 million, we have no option but to fund that out of contingencies and reserves unless we receive further government funding. So I do invite all councillors when they speak to consider where we would now be if we had spent even part of those reserves and to give thanks that this administration resisted repeated calls to do just that. Had we succumbed, our position today would be worse than it is, very much worse potentially and as it is, we have been able to use the reserves for precisely the reason that we built them up in the first place. One practical side of having the reserves is that Hampshire County Council was able to distribute government grants monies to caring organisations before actually receiving it from the government. We helped those agencies to hit the ground running at the time that it mattered most and we're very proud of that. But members will be aware that during the course of this year, the financial impact of COVID worried us all. There were times when our more pessimistic projections meant we were contemplating potential medium term non-viability, depending on how the government met its pledge to reimburse us. We were completely open about that and if you ask the director of corporate resources today, she will say very carefully that things look less bad than they did, but we still face huge challenges. Of course, helping through COVID is something that unites all councillors and I'm sure that we have all had requests to use our devolved budgets for that purpose. The devolved budgets enable us to make quick decisions and direct cash to deserving local causes and they're much loved by all councillors. The figure was due to drop to £5,000 next year, but we're recommending in this budget that they're retained permanently at £8,000 per councillor. In planning for the recovery, and that's the phase that we're now entering, we're also proposing an extra £3 million for Operation Resilience as a one-off funded from the new homes bonus and an extra £1.5 million next year for the development of highway projects to bid for external funding at short notice. Investing in Hampshire's infrastructure is essential for our long-term prosperity and it's important as our economy heads towards recovery. Also in this budget is an extra £5 million into the base budget for children's services. This will be used to augment the Modernising Placements Programme to meet pressures faced by the Educational Psychology Service to help with home... to help with home to school transport costs and for many other smaller issues. It's a fact of life that many of Hampshire's most important services, especially in the areas of adult care and children's services, are largely invisible to many members of the public. Unless they know someone in receipt of those services, they may take it for granted that vulnerable people are being cared for. But the pressures faced by those departments have increased and they have been made worse by Covid. And in planning for the recovery, it is right that we should invest in them where we can. We're therefore proposing two point one million, sorry, we are also proposing two point one million to meet IT growth pressures, including protection from cyber attacks. Our IT department has done Hampshire proud and I want to say this as an ex IT person. And so let's not take it for granted that our virtual meetings work and work well and let us pause for a moment to acknowledge that our IT infrastructure actually enabled Hampshire County Council to keep operating this year. I'm sure as we plan for the recovery, that many of the innovations implemented in double quick time will become part of our way of life. These extra funds are being found by use of the new homes bonus, the social care grant and lower than budgeted growth in our wage bill. On the capital programme, which is an essential part of planning for the recovery, it now runs, as the leader has said, two naught point seven five billion pounds over the life of the programme, something that other councils envy. We are proposing an additional sixty seven million pounds for new and extended school buildings in Hampshire, ensuring school places for our growing populations. And if anecdotal evidence that I've received from a midwife is to believe, uh one effect of the lockdowns is currently manifesting itself in future increased demand for those services, which will become apparent in years to come. We are also proposing a hundred and eighteen million pounds for structural maintenance and improvement of roads and bridges over the next three years. Ninety one million for integrated transport schemes, including eighteen million for walking and cycling improvements and a hundred and forty one million for major upgrades to school and other buildings over the next three years. And here I'd like to compliment again our officer team who've been so successful in attracting government grants by having off the shelf investment projects ready to go quickly. The energy improvements to our schools, which we've already discussed slightly under questions, will not only benefit the staff and pupils, but also form part of our drive towards carbon neutrality. Finally, I want to pay reference to our investment strategy for our reserves. Some councils have gone down the road of making specific investments in commercial property funded by loans from the Public Works Loan Board, which has now been outlawed. In doing so, they've helped to push up the prices of those properties and they've put huge risk pressures into their revenue accounts. Covid may deal a severe blow to the income generation and the marketability of such investment assets. By contrast, Hampshire County Council has invested in pooled investments where the risks are spread over a wider portfolio of assets. The result has been to achieve a return of nearly four percent overall with a much reduced risk profile and we will continue with that strategy. Mister Chairman, the administration has responded quickly and positively to the emergency and through use of reserves and contingencies, we are weathering the storm, albeit with much pain. We're now planning for the recovery and this budget represents a positive, constructive and responsible way forward for Hampshire. I therefore second with great pleasure the leader's proposal that the budget before us be approved.
Thank you, councillor Reed and councillor Mans. Now, before I call upon the leader of the Liberal Democrat Group to respond, this is the point at which we have questions, not debate, but questions to seek clarity on any items. So again, reminding you, not debate, but questions. Do we have any questions which members would like to put? I don't think I have any questions, so I'm going to then call upon the leader of the Liberal Democrat Group to respond to the proposals, which is councillor, um Keith House, councillor House.
Thank you much, Jevon. This has been a most difficult and challenging year for not just the county council, but for the country and world. And planning a budget for this year is unlike anything this council or our staff have ever had to face. So before commenting on any of the other budget papers, please let me put on record my thanks and the Liberal Democrat Group's thanks to all of the staff team that have had to work miracles to have detailed information in front of us all today. And let me again repeat the message I gave at our first virtual meeting late last spring as we were still in the first lockdown and had little if any perception that so far into the future we will be into our third lockdown with some form of restrictions still to last for months and a pandemic that is evolving to become endemic to require serious attention for many years into the future. That is to again thank all staff across the public sector that have gone way beyond the extra mile to keep services going, not least, of course, in our health service, where I've even come across operating theatre staff volunteering extra shifts to carry out vaccinations. But it's all frontline workers, from shop assistants to postal staff and bin crews and the teachers that are now getting back to planning for full classrooms. Deeply challenging times and I'm sure we all have enormous respect for all and beyond to those thousands of businesses around our county that are still struggling to know if they can keep going and retain staff in for so many sectors what is a shattered economy. But here we are. And I make those comments because in context they matter, but also because they inform my thoughts and the Liberal Democrats' group thoughts on our budget. Because our county and our country is crying out for hope for the future, for a vision and direction from those charged with governance. And this budget surely is not that. It has no hope and it has no vision. And I feel deeply sorry for our staff who've had to draft these figures for us today as I do not believe any of them joined our service to map out a future with more service cuts, more reductions in support for vulnerable people and vulnerable communities and an increasing sense that more of the same means less for any and less for all. That's because what we have in Hampshire is a total lack of vision for the future. Managing decline like a nineteen seventies bank manager overseeing a failing company that's failed to adjust to the modern world, a black and white image in a colour era. It's not that I haven't asked for this vision, this plan at every budget council meeting in years and at every budget council. I asked councillor Mans this year, just as I did last, and councillor Perry before him. Admirable, diligent and caring men both, but neither able to rise to the challenge or do more than write to the Secretary of State, write to the Chancellor, write to the Prime Minister and effectively get a brush off back. What's more, both councillor Mans and councillor Perry and the late councillor Formburgh before them were writing to their friends, to conservative office holders backed by their local conservative MPs and from their local conservative associations. All we can say with clarity is that the responsibility for decline rests with Hampshire's conservative MPs, as if they've been prepared to stand up for Hampshire, even during Theresa May's government with its small majority, change could have been achieved. It's harder now, of course, as Boris Johnson has the economic madness of Brexit to give priority to and his mission to level up the red wall in the north of England that gave him this majority just fifteen months ago. It could have been so different, as we've said here before. Even without more active support from the government, more could have been done here in Hampshire on the big issues that face our county. I always say, being very positive in my outlook, that county councils are at their best when they tackle the big strategic issues to make change happen. Large counties like Hampshire, Kent, Essex, Devon are in effect regional government with economic, social and environmental clout, should they choose to use it. Take the climate emergency, where we could have been regenerating renewable energy at scale, creating income to protect services, but we didn't. Where we could have been influencing travel before the pandemic to encourage walking and cycling to get better health outcomes, but we didn't. Where we could have been more ambitious to tackle the climate emergency than to park the ball at twenty fifty, uh rather than make token sums available, six hundred thousand pounds a year for two years, yippee, but we didn't. Take public health and care for our communities, where we could have sought a more active partnership with our health service to keep people fit and well fed, tackling the long term scourge of diabetes induced from induced from obesity and the obscenity of food banks in one of Britain's wealthiest counties and the world's wealthiest countries, but we didn't. Where we could have worked with the voluntary sector to expand rather than wipe out youth services, but we know protect mental health, tackle sexual health and reduce drug dependency, but we didn't. And we could have used our capital programme to assist on housing, more substantively on extra care, to help address the national housing crisis and by joining up public health and housing eradicate homelessness and give some hope to generations of rent, but we didn't. Instead, in all these areas, we found ways to reduce the size of state and state, to intervene less to support less and to dress it all up as efficiency and transformation. Not all of these areas and activities require large sums of money, some even make money. They can all help set a different direction, change course away from the simple mantra of the bank manager making cuts. But they require vision, they require leadership, and that is not happening here. Most of all, they need hope. Hampshire needs hope and a new direction and that is not what we have here. We have a series of financial statements to underline that Hampshire is not sustainable as a county council in the medium term. The phrase may have been exercised from these papers this time, but nothing has changed from the medium term plan detailed last autumn. What we have instead is new cuts dressed up as positive gains. Our very modest councillors' devolved grant budgets are to be protected and a token sum is to be added for two years to address the climate emergency. One point two million will surely do it, won't it? Not. But of course, it's just there to keep the backbenchers quiet and create a few stories in glossy leaflets for the election in May. The detail, of course, belies this because the detail says that by moving the deck chairs around the deck of this Titanic, nearly nine hundred thousand pounds a year in future is being removed from community organisations, from grants, from arts, from culture. And just at the time, these organisations are set to have to cope with the after effects of a worldwide pandemic. It really isn't very clever. But what will the majority here do today? They'll vote for it and they'll hope the lifeboats are big enough, but they're not. So what do we do? Conventionally, there are two routes for an opposition. The first is to put forward a detailed amendment, which realistically can only make modest changes to a capital and revenue budget of over nine hundred million pounds. In doing so, of course, we know the form is then for councillor Reed and others to justify that whatever we propose is financially irresponsible and could wreck the county's finances. That's pretty ironic, given they're erect already, where we've never proposed such. And if councillor Reed really wants to pursue this line, as he's already started to do again today, he needs to know that councillor Collett has already the full detail of quite modest proposals from previous years. Adrian's so much better at record keeping than I am. Detail of of how they really wouldn't have trashed the balance is and oh, how embarrassingly most of those ideas got picked up later by the administration and claimed as their own. I could at this point too spend significant time talking through the reserve strategy. It's at appendix seven for those interested and demonstrate just how modest sums squirreled away within six hundred million could be used generating income to help protect services. In doing so, of course, we know the form is then for either councillor Reed or more recently councillor Heron or councillor Grejewski to jump up and attack the one district council in Hampshire that has managed through carefully managed investment to generate jobs and income in net terms more substantive than its income from council tax, business rates and fees and at the same time protect all services, like cover off some of those cut by Hampshire, secure a thousand new affordable homes in the last three years and reduce council tax every year in real terms eighteen years running. But I did tell my Liberal Democrat colleagues I wouldn't say much about easily all the brilliant new and newish administrations in Winchester or Hart that are doing fantastic things or indeed the bright ideas that the Liberal Democrats will put in place when they take on responsibility for running GOSport in May. So I won't do that other than to note that what conservatives call debt, Liberal Democrats call investment in the future, just as young families do when they take up their first mortgage and just as an entrepreneur does when starting a new business. So I really can't imagine Elon Musk or Jeff Bezos starting out in Hampshire, but maybe they could with some hope and some vision from the county council. SpaceX in Stockbridge, Amazon HQ in Andover, perhaps not. The second option for an opposite opposition is to put down words of criticism, to call on the government to do things differently, to demand the administration changes course. But the problem is, we've done that and then you haven't. And the government and our conservative MPs and conservative councillors really aren't interested. They want the quiet life. It's easier just to agree, even if they personally are concerned. We can't rock the boat. Boris must be right. Brexit is good. The NHS will get its three hundred and fifty million pounds each week. The red wall is what matters. The administration, no, it too wants the quiet life. It's so much easier just to take it on the chin. Isn't that what conservatives do? So we won't do that today, oh, yeah, Mister Chairman. We will simply vote against this budget. We will make a heartfelt and determined commitment. In seventy days, we have an election for a new county council for a new Hampshire. And the Liberal Democrat commitment is to that new Hampshire, a Hampshire with a vision for the future and with hope at the heart of that vision. A Hampshire that will truly address our climate emergency with renewables, with sustainable transport and energy, helping tackle fuel poverty. A Hampshire that will truly promote our public health, our mental health and improve quality of life genuinely from cradle to grave. A Hampshire that will work with business to create wealth to protect our environment and improve our infrastructure. A Hampshire that will support volunteers, our culture, our arts. A Hampshire that will work to start to see the end of food banks. A Hampshire of hope and a vision for a shared future. That is too big an ask for today's budget, but today is a chance for a new start, for a reset. So my message today, the Liberal Democrat message today, is a call to arms. A call to everyone in Hampshire to join us on our journey of hope. It won't be easy. Nothing that truly matters ever is. There will be hard choices, there will be difficult decisions, but there can be hope. Hope for a better future after a decade austerity, after a year of lockdowns and pandemic. So Liberal Democrats here at Hampshire today will not support this budget, Mister Chairman, but we will commit before and after Thursday sixth of May to a wide ranging debate for Hampshire and its people for a better way, for a future that addresses our health, our environment, our society with hope. That will come forward within a hundred days with a real budget that says we need to learn from the lessons of the last year, that says people and communities must come first, that says our real commitment is to our children and our grandchildren that need homes and hope for a future not threatened by floods and storms, by fires and heatwaves, by species extinction and famine and disease. That's too big an ask, I'm sure, for this council today. But let's not make it too big, too difficult, too easy away from the easy life for the new council. My ask, should Mister Chairman, the Liberal Democrats ask to all, join us before it's too late and let's bring back hope to Hampshire. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, councillor House. I take it that you have no amendment you're proposing. I move therefore on to the next speaker, who is the leader of the independent group, to respond to any proposals. And he wishes, which is councillor John Benison. Councillor Benison?
Uh thank you, Chairman. Uh I won't be responding to the um to the budget. Thank you very much.
Okay. So the Labour and unaffiliated members, um does the leader of the Labour group wish to make a statement?
Right. Thank you very much. Um the leader and sole member of the Labour group yet again. What I'd like to do first is to thank the staff and all the volunteers in in Hampshire, in the whole of Hampshire. We were a little slow to start and PPE was sadly. We were a little slow to start, and PPE was sadly missing at the very beginning. The setup of the hotline was a little bit slow. In Basingstoke, volunteers had started with food parcels and assistance a few weeks before. But, oh boy, when we started, we have served the community well. The recovery will be long and hard. However, I do struggle with the proposal to put the council tax up so high at a time when it is at the most difficult for lots and lots of people. People out of work, businesses failing. I'd also like to make a plea to keep our music department going. I'm saying this because I'm one of the councillors who reluctantly and sadly will not be coming back. I'm not going for reelection. I have loved my time and I have loved serving, and I would like to thank all the councillors that have helped me through some very, very difficult times. And just thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Frankham. Could I say on behalf of all members that it's been a pleasure working with you? We wish you well in the future, and I shall miss you.
Yeah.
Right, so now we're on to general debate, I think. So this is where you raise your hand and tell us how you feel about the budget proposals and whether you would be recommending or not recommending them. I have councillor Carpenter. Councillor Carpenter?
Thank you very much, Chairman. In response to councillor House's comments there, I think we've got ourselves our own new captain hindsight, actually. He says here, we could have done this, but we didn't, could have done that, but we didn't. It's absolute nonsense. Some of the things he mentioned that we could have done, but we didn't. So many of these things were out of our hands during the pandemic period, of course. Other, in other ways, we prioritised to help the vulnerable and those in need of care during the pandemic. And so our services had to be changed around and transformed. You know, the things he's talking about, it just doesn't ring true to me and what I've seen happening on the ground. And it's a good job that we did have our reserves. We were, I have firsthand experience knowing, as councillor Reed said, that care homes receive payments way before other councils gave them their payments. I know that personally. And we had our reserves and were able to do that, and that helped a lot of people get out of a lot of very difficult situations. He talks about what his plan was. It's not much of a plan. I'm not particularly worried about seeing what his plan is, to be honest. But he talks about climate change. We have a great climate change strategy. It's been moving forward very quickly, as councillor Warwick and councillor Humby have already said. Culture and arts, we have the best music service in the country, one of the best. And our library services have provided great service during the pandemic. I didn't hear anything. I know he's keeping it for his election, but that's fine, but we have a really good record on all those things. Hope, he talks about hope, I think it was pretty hopeless.
Thank you, councillor Carpenter. Now I have councillor Latham followed by councillor Glenn. So councillor Latham.
Councillor Latham? Hopefully you can hear me. The first thing to say is how delighted I was that at the end of January, we received notification that external auditors had approved our accounts, which was not unexpected. But pleased to hear it, bearing in mind the unjustified criticism we got at the last council meeting. Turning to the other thing that I think is worth mentioning is that I was relieved, quite pleased with the funding that we got from central government in December. In the beginning of the pandemic, we were told that we should spend what we need to spend and they would reimburse us. Well, we took them at their word, and in fact, up to the end of December, I think we'd spent a hundred and seventy six million pounds on Covid. Now, this report to the cabinet concludes that in fact the government have been true to their word and have refunded us to the tune of approximately a hundred and seventy one million pounds. The other thing is that at the beginning, we were looking at costings going up to twenty twenty four of two hundred and ten million pounds. Now, as a result of what we've got from the government, that figure's been reduced to eighty seven million pounds. That's still a lot of money that we may have to find over the next three financial years. We've got the reserves to do it if we need them. But the fact that the government has so far covered our costs largely should give us confidence that they will continue to do so. Turning to T twenty one, our business as usual for this financial year has been strong. Most departments have met their budgets and their transformation programmes, and I see that most departments have been even able to put money into cost of change. Turning to the section twenty five report of the chief finance officer, she also confirms that looking forward to twenty one, twenty two, provided we comply with the recommendations contained to cabinet, then she can give a strong opinion as to the robustness of the accounts and our reserves. Now, that does, of course, mean that we are recommending a council tax increase of four point nine nine percent. And some might say, why do we need to do that in these particularly difficult times? And I understand that. The reason quite simply is this. We all know that our overheads every year go up by a minimum of forty million pounds.
One minute remaining.
And that figure is on the assumption that there is a council tax increase anyway of three point nine nine percent. The cost of social care for the elderly and for children's services out of that forty million is twenty nine point four million. So in effect, what we're talking about is we need the tax, the council tax increase to help fund those areas for the people who most need it. People in care for the elderly and children's services. That being the case, as a caring society, I believe we should increase council tax to cover the people most in need. I therefore support the recommendations. I support also the council tax to four point nine percent, remembering, of course, that we still remain the second lowest council tax in the country, providing an outstanding level of service. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Glenn, followed by councillor Warwick. Councillor Glenn?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm here, and I have a muted chairman, okay? The
Touche.
The what, I thought this was a budget discussion we were having, not a party political broadcast on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Party, which is all we've heard. Absolutely no real homework done in terms of recommendations to, let's say, tweak or improve what is being recommended. There must be an election coming up, Chairman. That, I suppose, is what's causing this enthusiasm all of a sudden by the opposition. It is sad that they're using this opportunity to scrabble around for a few votes. The word obscenity was used about food banks. Yes, it is unfortunate that they have to exist, but no gratitude was shown by the leader of the Liberal Democrats to thank the generosity of the British public who put money, who put food and the necessities of living into these food banks to look after those who are less fortunate. Not one word of thanks to general public. And he talks about the brilliant administration at heart. Well, he's perfectly aware that the brilliant administration at heart has so far in its budget proposals, it's trying to reduce funding for the homeless by one hundred thousand pounds. But to make up for this generosity, it's putting a lot more money into consultancy work for building a new village. I imagine, I would suggest that they're going to have to work pretty hard in our area to try and keep up their vote. He mentions that the red wall is going. Well, that's what I'm mentioning anyway, maybe. But let me tell you that the yellow street going through Hampshire is a lot dimmer than it's ever been before. And let's go on to the independent addition to the debate. Ah, sorry, there was no input there. What does the independent party do on the county council? There wasn't even a congratulations from the independent party to thank our officers for the extraordinary work they've done for the last year. Not one word. All we got was, I've got nothing to say. And this is a member of the group that is the aforementioned group at heart. They're part of that administration, absolutely idle. So let me go on to the good news here. The leader of the Labour Party, councillor Jane Frankham. Now, there's an opinion in an opposition place that I actually respect. Quite often, the Labour Party has put forward recommendations for one or two changes to our budget, and quite often we do listen to the Labour Party when they do that. I would like to thank Jane Frankham for actually showing some honour in the opposition that we've got. I'd like to, I'd like to thank her for the work that she's done for the county council in all the years she's been on it. And to finish, obviously, I'm going to support the recommendations. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you. I now have councillor Warwick, followed by councillor McAvoy.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you. I just wanted to say under item one hundred and thirty how much I welcome the commitment of this council and this administration in this budget to prioritise climate change and our climate change programme. In fact, with relatively modest sums, I suppose, in the whole scheme of things, we've shown that our climate change team works collaboratively with key partners to produce some really groundbreaking work, certainly with the Carbon Trust. They are leading the country on their administrative tools around carbon management, and we are delivering a range of community projects, including the option to put solar PV on a hundred and twenty thousand homes across Hampshire. And actually, Operation Resilience, the commitment in the budget there is looking at how resilient we will be to the effects of climate change, to flooding and drainage, again, perhaps not necessarily noticed, but actually a really important aspect of this. The thirty million pound grant that's going to put solar PVs on three hundred and fifty of our schools across Hampshire is just a testament to the ability of our officers to tap into those government grants really quickly. And all of this, Chairman, without exposing our residents to half a billion pounds worth of debt, as we see in the borough of Eastleigh. Thank you.
Thank you. I have councillor McAvoy, then councillor Perry. Councillor McAvoy?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. In spite of earlier concerns about our future financial challenges, I am very pleased that Hampshire County Council has been given a clean bill of health and that the accounts have been unconditionally accepted, showing that Hampshire County Council is a going concern. I would actually like to take the opportunity to thank Carolyn Williamson and her corporate resources team, who frankly have done an amazing job in balancing the books and steering us to our current financial position, which does provide hope and vision for the future. As councillor House said, things could have been so different. The Liberal Democrats could have been in charge, and we will now be facing the abyss with their obsession with spending all our reserves. I heard no hope or vision for our residents for the future from the Liberal Democrats' alternative budget. So my congratulations for the vision shown by the Conservative budget, which I will be supporting, Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McAvoy. Councillor Perry, followed by councillor Thornton.
Yes, so thank you, Mr Chairman. And members will not be surprised to hear that I too am prepared to support the proposals in the budget, and I do congratulate the leader and his team and the officers in what has been an extremely difficult year to come up with a firm and a good proposal for our budget. I'd also like to pay my tribute to councillor Frankham for her contribution to the council, and indeed all opposition members, because we are a democratic council and all in our own way contribute to the democratic process. And I take some of the comments from councillor House on the chin. But although he said that there's so much we haven't done, you know, there's a great deal that we have done over the years, and we have done them in very difficult circumstances. He said, we didn't do anything about cycle paths. Well, there are lots of cycle paths, certainly. If he wanted to travel from Eastleigh down to North Badsgley, he'll find there's a wonderful cycle path that runs from Valley Park to North Badsgley. Says we've done nothing for youth services. We'll go down to Ringwood and see the new youth centre there that we put in, go to Romsey and see the new youth youth centre that this council provided there to help the young people of that area. And there are others across the county. We're not a housing authority, so sure, we haven't built houses, but our extra care provision, I think, is leading the nation in showing the importance of getting decent housing and accommodation for elderly people. And in terms of culture, the Hampshire Cultural Trust, again, is a national leader in showing ways that councils, by sinking ahead, preparing properly, we're able to guarantee the provision of our museums and art galleries and cultural centres. I think that is good. Councillor House promises hope. Well, is it hope or is it hot air? I think what the people of Hampshire want is was to keep our feet firmly on the ground, to offer a reliable and solid provision of services. And that's what this council has done, and this is what this budget enables us to continue to do. So it will certainly have my support.
Thank you, councillor Perry. Councillor Thornton, followed by councillor Heron.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'd just like to mention a couple of things. That's again, give my thanks to councillor Frankham, and I wish her a long and happy retirement. And also, I'd like to thank councillor Liz Fairhurst for her prompt reply to my query about parent carers and vaccination. It was very decent of her to come back so quickly. I'm slightly puzzled by the fact that Conservative councillors keep mentioning that the Conservative government has kept its word. Were they expecting it not to, I ask? And are they surprised that they have done so? So I find that quite interesting. And don't they trust Boris Johnson and his cabinet to keep his word? Obviously not. Also, just in a very quick response to councillor Glenn, as one of the volunteer roles that I do, I work for the Eastleigh Food Bank, and I can confirm that they have been thanked extensively by Eastleigh Borough Council and councillor House. So he doesn't have to worry about the local food banks not being thanked by councillor House. They already have been done so. Thank you very much. Cheers.
Thank you. Councillor Heron, followed by councillor Porter.
Chairman, thank you. I can't resist saying I congratulate councillor Thornton on raising trust in governments, having served in Parliament with a Liberal Democrat coalition that did so well on trust with tuition fees. But Chairman, moving on. Chairman, councillor House spoke eloquently about hope, and indeed, hope is vital to the success of Hampshire. But so is substance. And by substance, I mean the work required to formulate plans and budgets, not just make pretty election speeches. By substance, I mean not to spend today gambling our residents' money. Not our own or willing investors, as entrepreneurs do, but hard earned money raised by taxation. Substance means forsaking easy, cry pleasing pledges, to spend reserves, as his group have advocated at almost every budget meeting, but recognising that a gamble with the county's finances is a gamble with the very lives of the most vulnerable of our residents. Chairman, I could say more, much more. Chairman, I could say more, much more about the precarious state of Eastleigh's finances and their shocking external auditor's report. But I won't. Instead, I will commend this budget to members, saying it offers hope, it offers aspiration. And most importantly, if a budget is not to be hot air, it offers substance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Porter, followed by councillor Penison.
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. I just want to start by saying thank you to the staff. It's not been an easy year at all, as we've all said. And many would have been many, many working many more hours than they have actually been contracted to do. And we know that many of them have not taken their full holidays. And that may have been, may have allowed this county council to have greater productivity at perhaps their home life's expense. I really want to say thank you to every, every single one who's been so kind to respond as quickly as they could to our queries. But there are four areas where this county has a responsible group of councillors. We know we have a responsibility. But actually, unfortunately, although we believe it's a government responsibility, and actually councillor Mann's mentioned this at the beginning of his speech, we don't, we haven't seen anything from government so far. The first is care of dementia sufferers. We certainly know that from adult services, that the number of people who are really struggling as a result, as a result of the pandemic, the dementia care has had to rise and they are really struggling with the whole process. And we are likely to see an increase in the number of dementia sufferers that have to be taken into care or given extra help. The government so far has not made a clear statement about dementia sufferers being part of an NHS responsibility. The care of young people becoming adults who are seeking asylum. This council very well and very rightly actually supports those adults. It costs this council money. It's a government responsibility and we're still waiting for their decision to do something about it. Children who have a place at school but no transport to get them there. Just as I mentioned in my question, there is no government requirement, although they're given a place at school for rural children to have a place on a school bus. And finally, youth services. In this time when we know that young people are having the most difficult time of any youth, of any era that we know, yet the government could have made a generous decision to support youth services, but instead deadly silence. These are all areas where the government has not actually tackled the costs and the county has had to take it on the chin. It's deeply regretful.
Thank you. Councillor Penison, followed by councillor Bolton.
Thank you, chairman. It would be remiss of me not to reply to the councillor from Odeon for some of the remarks that he's made. His first remarks were that he disagreed with the Liberal Democrats about making a party political speeches. And then straight away went on to give a personal attack against me and my colleagues in Hart. Now, what he's doing, bringing up Hart's budget in a Hampshire County Council meeting, I don't know. But just to put him straight, £100,000 is not being taken away from the homeless. And yes, Hart is putting money into going for a new development. And that money is coming from a Tory central government. It's not from the people of Hart. He mentioned as well that I perhaps didn't thank the staff. Well, of course, he won't know that I have meetings, as do all the opposition parties, with senior officers and have thanked them there. And of course, I I will personally thank all the staff of the council, all the work that they've done over the last, last year. So I was hoping that my good friends in the Tory party, most of them I have a good relationship with. But it seems that some of them are the nasty party, which is what they used to be called, is still alive and kicking in some of their members. Thank you very much, chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Bolton, followed by councillor Foster.
Thank you, chairman. My comments are going to be relatively brief. Firstly, I'd like to congratulate the director of corporate resources, Caroline Williamson and her staff for the sound financial management that I've seen in the council over the last 12 years. I believe that the county council is a forward-looking council, as exemplified by the ongoing plans to deliver services to all residents within Hampshire and particularly addressing those needs of the needy. And I think the other exemplifying aspect is the four-year capital programme of some 744 million, looking to the future to address the needs of Hampshire. And for example, the climate change strategy. And so the county council is addressing future needs with this probably second-largest capital programme in the country. And I think that is very forward-looking. And finally, in addition to congratulating and thanking the director of corporate resources, I would like to thank all other council officers with whom I've worked over the last 12 years and thank them for all their support that they have given me. And finally, chairman, I support both this revenue and capital budget as I have done over the last 12 years. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bolton. Councillor Foster, followed by councillor Mitchell.
Thank you, chairman. I support this responsible budget and the recommendations. And I reiterate the thanks to Hampshire County Council officers and all those members who've worked on this. I wonder if the opposition budget for Hope was actually referring to howling Lord Alan Hope of the monster-raving Looney Party. But actually, I doubt that he'd want to be associated with, with the opposition. Where the opposition controls councils with the support of supposed independents, as in Hart, we can see the problems they deliver. They shout in opposition, but when they're in control, an example of their failings and the downward spiral they'd lead us into, which they're doing in Hart, where they're proposing a loss of £400,000, rising in future years to over £1 million on a budget of just £10 million. Wasteful spending on vanity and unnecessary projects, yet no delivery, other than hot air on things like cycle
Chairman, point of order. What's this got to do with Hampshire County Council's budget, chairman?
I'll be the judge of that. Please continue.
Thank you, chair. Yet no delivery on cycle piles, use facilities, wasting £100,000 on wooden planters. They invest in Eastleigh in commercial property with borrowed money, just as Covid hit. Exactly the opposite of the sort of things that the leader of the opposition was talking about. That's reckless and irresponsible and indicative of the fact that if they were, if their recommendations on this budget were followed, it wouldn't be a constructive budget. They say they'd do something in 100 days. I wonder if they can actually count. Our officers and this budget proves a sound, sustainable budget and I fully support it.
Thank you. Councillor Mitchell, followed by councillor Simpson. Councillor Mitchell.
Sorry, chair. Thank you. Councillor Glenn criticised the independent group for not commenting on the budget. As an unaffiliated independent councillor, I was not called upon to speak. If I had been, I would have also declined. This is not because I don't join in the thanks to all officers for their hard work or because I don't support the budget, but because I don't wish to waste anyone's time by repeating what others have said. I rather resent councillor Glenn equating silence in this meeting with idleness outside it.
Thank you, councillor Mitchell. Councillor Simpson, followed by councillor McNair Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This shall be my last speech on the budget, as I too am standing down. Some 16 years ago, I recollect we put forward a motion for extra money to go into maintaining the roads. That was turned down. We now have the result of that failure in Operation Resilience, which accepts we failed as a county to maintain our roads to a proper standard. I would like to thank all of the officers, not just Caroline, who has done an excellent job, but all the senior officers and those under them. Because I am absolutely convinced without the excellent quality that they have, the Conservative Party would have made even a bigger hash of our county than what they have. Councillor Carpenter called councillor House Mister Hindsight. Actually, it was Foresight. Throughout the years I've been on here, we have told again and again what is going to happen. Again and again, we've beaten our head against a brick wall. Sometimes the Conservative Party has then done a U-turn and accepted what we put forward. Other times, they've just ignored us. There seems to be an idea in the Conservative Party that we can have a Rolls-Royce service on a Poundland budget. You can't. It's not going to happen. There is an idea that efficiency savings are not cuts. They are. They're not making things more efficient. They're making them worse. We can, we know they're making them worse because you go into the rural parts of Hampshire and you'll find no buses, no libraries. All the services that people help, the community cohesion are being cut. The roads are under managed decline. They're closing ever closer to unlawful. We don't know when that will actually be reached, but they're getting there, which is why they have to bring Operation Resilience in to keep them as lawful as they can. But it's not just the roads. I would suggest the current administration is managing the decline of everything. And it is such a shame because we have a brilliant council. I include many Conservatives in that. They know what is wrong, but they don't stand up to those that believe you should cut, cut and cut. Mr. Chairman, your party is creating a desolation and calling it utopia. Totally wrong. Please, please, in the future, start thinking about the future and not just about cutting. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to the organisations known as Rolls-Royce and Poundland, I'm sure the previous speaker meant no disrespect to either of those organisations. Councillor McNair Scott, followed by councillor Humby.
Thank you very much, chairman. And also thank you very much indeed, the leader. This is my last council meeting. I can't tell you how much I've minded not seeing people in reality. So it's also my 20th year. So I have actually attended that number of budget debates and not much has changed. If anything, this was even wilder and woollier than the, than the rest. And it took absolutely no heed of the kind of outstanding audited results we've had. And councillor Perry mentioned the, the culture, the culture, the Hampshire cultural organisation. The libraries, our libraries are performing better than virtually all the library services in the country. So it's, I felt that the leader of the opposition didn't not, wasn't living in the same world as me at all. And I've often felt that over the last 20 years. But nothing changes and I will be, of course, supporting this budget in every way. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor McNair Scott, and I wish you well in the future.
Thank you.
Councillor Humby, followed by councillor Collett.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Interesting debate, certainly. And I'll come back to councillor House's comments in a second on the cycling and walking. But as members will be well aware, we continue to manage a vast capital programme with respect to transport and councillor Reed and councillor Manns have mentioned that already. And this is interventions and highways and maintenance. It's a credit to the team that they have continued to attract funds and deliver on the ground despite the challenges of last year and reacting to new national initiatives to help respond to the Covid crisis, as well as shifts and emphasis on government policy, which you would expect going through a crisis like this. Members, as you know from your local patches, the pandemic has affected the way we travel. Evidence indicates we're using buses and trains much less, travelling more locally, cycling and walking more. We make significantly fewer journeys overall through traffic levels, although actually traffic levels haven't dropped as much as the latest lockdown as they did in the first one last spring. The Prime Minister has now set out a roadmap out of lockdown and we begin to contemplate economic recovery. And this is a critical time for all of us to make the changes in our high streets and in the roads and the way we support and be a prosperous, healthy and green recovery, making it easier for people to sustain healthier lifestyles and helping to meet the county council's targets and our climate change strategy and to reduce carbon emissions. And with that, Mr. Chairman, with that last point in mind, we're already ahead of the game with the pandemic, before the pandemic struck, especially with our transforming cities funds. And that was the point that I wanted to make about councillor House said, that we hadn't, you know, we hadn't done anything on cycling and walking. Last year's budget, we have £45 million we put forward for integrated transport schemes. And £10 million of that was specifically on cycling and walking. So now we've worked with our partners in Southampton and in Portsmouth and have attracted over £100 million into the area specifically for those sort of issues. So the capital programme progresses ways that we can work more closely with the community on active travel schemes to identify new ways of encouraging sustainable transport and growth that maintain economic recovery. So I fully support the budget, Mr. Chairman. And the work that indeed Caroline Williamson and Rob Carr has done and indeed councillor Reed and the leader for the support they've given them. It has been extremely difficult for all of us in these challenging times. But we have a budget now that we can look to go forward in supporting all those aims and ambitions, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now have councillor Collett, followed by councillor Woodward.
Thank you, chairman. I'd like to start, as others have done, by thanking our staff for the fantastic job they've done, particularly Caroline Williamson, Rob Carr and all of their team, but actually everyone across the county council. They're dealt a dreadful card by the administration here, but boy, do they do their best to make the best of it for the people of Hampshire. And I really admire them. Chairman, before I say what I want to say, I just want to answer two points that have been made. One is people trot out this nonsense that comes every year during the budget debate that somehow or other the Liberal Democrats wanted to spend all the balances. We have over £650 million in balances. We have never proposed more than 5% of those to be spent and usually it's around the 1%. So to suggest that we want to spend all the balances is just a blatant untruth. Chairman, I also want to comment on what's been said about Hart District Council because it's been said it needs to be answered. First of all, talking about homelessness, Hart now has a policy which has succeeded to implement now for three years of no second night out. Anyone who is found having to sleep out never has to sleep a second night out because our housing officers are on to it, providing solutions. I'm very proud of that. So nonsense about talking, talking about homelessness being cut is just a total fabrication. And chairman, there's been talk about the new settlement being pursued by Hart and the money being spent on that. As has already been said by councillor Simpson, that money is funded by the government who recognise, they at least recognise, that if you plan properly, you can get the infrastructure that comes with development instead of the failed Tory approach we've had for years in Hart, where developers choose to go and they just build and build and build all around our towns, all over Hart. Well, if that's what Hart Conservatives want to go back to, we'll make sure the people of Hart know that in the elections that are coming up. Chairman, I'm not so convinced that Rishi Sunak is actually making his promise, is actually meeting his promise to fund everything. It's very hard work to get money out of the government. But the problems of the county council's finance finance go much deeper than the costs of the pandemic. Going right back to the 2008 crash and the need in 2010 for the coalition to stabilise the economy, some great work was done. But what's happened since then? Year after year after year of continued austerity. It just never stops. We're told it's going to stop, but it doesn't. It just carries on. Now, I think if the government wasn't a Conservative government, Hampshire County Council would be making an almighty fuss about that and would be holding Hampshire MPs to account to do something about it. But because they're your chums, because they're your party, your party loyalty overrides your loyalty to the people of Hampshire that you serve. And you may touch someone's elbow in a corridor, you might write the occasional letter, but I see no sustained campaign going on to get the finances of Hampshire back on to the footing that they should be. I seen the MPs for Hampshire, I don't see their feet being held to the fire for what they're doing to fight for the finances that Hampshire County Council needs to provide the level of service that we need. So Chairman, the responsibility for this lies with this administration as much with the government. And I totally support the vision put forward by councillor House. That's what we will be putting to the people of Hampshire in May. It will give them an opportunity for a change of approach and actually deliver the services that people need. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Woodward, followed by councillor Darden.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I was just wondering which meeting I was in. Was I in the budget setting of Hart District Council or Hampshire County Council? As we've heard perhaps more about Hart than we have about the remainder of Hampshire today. Fortunately, I've checked the agenda and this is actually Hampshire County Council. I am a little disappointed, Chairman, because I was really looking forward to debating, as I always do, the Liberal Budget and the Liberal Budget Amendment. Sadly, that doesn't seem to have appeared today. I think it's all very well to say as a party that it was going to vote against the budget. But of course, what people look for, I think, in terms of leadership is, well, what's the alternative then? And sometimes we see some little alternatives being put before us, but sadly, nothing today. So that means, of course, that we must focus on the budget which is before us, which of course is the budget being put forward by the Conservative Party for Hampshire's residents. And I think perhaps something we should look at as well, which hasn't been touched upon yet, is what do the majority of Hampshire residents think in terms of the current financial strategy of Hampshire County Council? And I think what we need to look at is the survey which has been carried out among Hampshire residents, which has been referenced in appendix 11. I know it's a long way to read through, but it is there. And what we read is that thousands of residents, of those thousands of residents, the majority, which is over 50%, agreed that the county council should continue with its current financial strategy. But I think that is something of which we should take note. And I'm sure it has been taken note of. And I would like to commend as well, as many of my colleagues have, the work which has been done by our officers through the hardest of times. And Covid has simply added to the difficulties which the council has had to face now over a number of years in terms of reduced budgets, the increased expectations of the people we represent in terms of what they would like to see us doing. And in terms of what we're doing, and as we look around the county of Hampshire and see infrastructure projects still continuing despite Covid, new roads being built, I look at the Stubbington bypass in Faram, and see that we even have sufficient reserves to be able to bolster the additional costs there of a bypass project which is approaching £40 million. How can that be done? Because we have looked after the reserves and not frittered them away on any sort of frivolity. There's a capital programme here approaching a billion pounds for Hampshire. And I think that is an example of a thriving county and the fact that we also look after this county's infrastructure in all respects and Operation Resilience, which I've had some involvement over the years, has been mentioned a number of times as well. And that is a project which doesn't look to patch up holes and nothing else. It is looking to build, as the word suggests, resilience into the future. So I think this is a good budget in the most difficult of circumstances, and I would ask that all colleagues do support it. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. And lastly, I think I have councillor Darden, before returning to the main speakers. Councillor Darden.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I will start off. I've been on the county council now for almost 30 years. And I first of all want those who are retiring, just like yourself, Chairman, I would like to wish them well, obviously, in their retirement. I've made quite a few friends amongst Conservatives, Liberals and some of the past Labour members. Because, yes, on occasions I've been political, as many others have, but on the mainstay of things, I think there's a lot of good people on the county council. I want to start by thanking all the staff actually on the county council. I know I've dealt mainly with social care, particularly in adult social care, and I know full well how grateful I am to them for what they've tried to do with the limited resources over the years. And extra care is one thing, it's been mentioned, that I've been very supportive of, as you're well aware, Chairman. But I also want to say a few things. For instance, when I first started on the council all those years ago, 40% of the county's finances was supplied from central government. And now we get virtually nothing other than seeking funds or they dish out handouts or whatever. But we could plan with your budgets of years ago, and it's very, I have to say, very difficult now. And we have to look at new ways. And I know what councillor House was talking about. He's talking a vision. He was talking for visions for hope. Yes, we didn't put a budget forward, but we've done it many years on, and it's just voted down, and it's almost a waste of time, quite frankly. You need the power to put your budget forward, because the opposition, unless you've got the votes, you can't get it through. But having said that, I want to make people realise this increase of 4.99%, which has been forced perhaps by central government, and the Consumer Price Index is only 0.7%, not even 1%. And then you've got a police, people have been talking elsewhere at other authorities, police budget for a bandee going up by £15. Energy prices going up, which will on the 1st of April, another £100. And it was Mrs May who said she was concerned about the families just about managing. Well, how are they going to manage with increases of £64 for a bandee from the county council? Then you have the district councils, then you have the £15 from the police authorities, and their energy costs probably going up by at least £100. It's all adding up, and more of these just about managing, Chairman, will go under. It is really, and we've seen, we were talking about food banks, but we know they're increasing. They've doubled three times the people who are using them. And there must be a reason for that. And then you've got, and 6 million people in this country now are on, I listened to a programme the other night on television in the status of destitute. How dreadful is that with a country that we have finances at our disposal, and yet there's 6 million people's destitute? Now, I'm not in that position, but I feel for people like that. I really do. And this government has to be doing something to change things that we don't have to put.
Could you finish, please?
Yes, okay. Just finish off, Chairman. Thank you. Is that we shouldn't be putting rises of this nature up for people. They just can't afford it. So I'll leave it there, Chairman, but once again, thank you for listening.
Thank you, councillor Darden. Now, I've got a couple of late hands going up. Councillor Hughes, followed by councillor Wade.
Thank you, Chairman, for indulging me as a late hand. I always enjoy the budget because it becomes a party political broadcast. But sat here listening to so many members who have indicated that they are retiring and standing down, I believe means that those of us who are much younger in terms of on this council and are seeking to come back again in May, realise that we will probably have to step up and fill some of those shoes, because the wealth of experience and knowledge that is leaving us will be very hard to replace. However, each February, we produce a budget, and it's a massive budget, £1.7, £1.8 billion. And I take my hat off to the officers. That is a significant, a significant amount of money that pales into insignificance what is done at the local level. And I had this conversation in my local borough of Hare, when I pointed out to them that our budget is over a thousand times less than what Hampshire's having to deal with. And so the numbers we're dealing with, the responsibilities that a tier-one authority has to deliver to its residents are significant. And I take my hats off to the officers for each year coming up with a budget that seeks to move us forward and at the same time keep us economically sound. I know if you're aware, but last September, the Office of National Statistics did a poll of 150,000 people in the UK, wellbeing, sorting out how happy they are. And the two, the second and third most unhappiest places to live in the country were Winchester and Eastleigh. It's in the Daily Echo, that's where the report is, I found it. Is it just coincidence that they're both Liberal Democrat authorities? I don't know. I suspect it purely is. But I take very seriously what we do here and how we do it. And I have to say that the decisions we make today, including a 4.99% increase in our council tax, is a very difficult decision. And I'm sure it's just as difficult for Liberal Democrat-held Portsmouth City Council have also decided to raise their council tax by 4.99%. These are difficult times. The pandemic is something that we've not ever seen before, and we are recovering from the shock of it. And therefore, I have to support this budget, and hopefully we will come to a stable state in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Hughes. Now, I think this is the last speaker for the moment. Councillor Wade.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder what the people.
I have another one. Councillor Joy coming after you, councillor Wade. Sorry. Please start.
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. I would like to speak on behalf of the thousands, in fact, the majority of people of Hampshire, that didn't fill in the survey, that everyone's happy with the way things are going. Because they've had years of austerity followed by a pandemic. Now, the world we're in now, the same old ways are not going to be relevant in the future. We need change. We have increasing demand on adult and children's services, our roads are broken and our libraries are closing. But our staff in that environment have done an absolutely brilliant job trying to deliver services against a background of reducing funding and rising demand. And that has gone on through the pandemic. And I, like other members, wish to thank them and pay tribute to all Hampshire County Council staff for the excellent job they've done on behalf of the people of Hampshire. But what of the future in the post-pandemic world? We have more unemployed, we have more broken businesses, and we have increased health issues as a result of the pandemic and the fallout of that. Will the same ways we've always gone still be relevant? Will all the people of Hampshire want to see the same old cuts, same old reductions? We need something different, Chairman. We need a new way. We need a light at the end of Hampshire's tunnel. We need to give hope, as councillor House says. We need to show the people of Hampshire things are going to be different, and we can deliver a different type of service to you. Because we can't just carry on the same way. It isn't working. This is an opportunity for this authority to deliver something new and something different. Throughout the world, changing, continuous improvement, doing things differently is how things progress. We will not progress with the same old strategies. We've allowed the government to reduce local government funding, and we've done not really enough to fight. We've got all these MPs in Hampshire, they're all the same party, and all they've done is vote for the cuts. In effect, the people you helped got elected vote for the cuts. It's like Turkey's voting for Christmas. But what would the people of Hampshire want? They would want us to stand up and fight this government to get funding back for them. Right? For the old, the vulnerable, the sick and the young, and now the unemployed as well. We need to have people facing policies. We need policies that show the future will be better. We've been in a very dark time. We need to give hope. We need to look at the very people that don't fill in the surveys, don't fill in the surveys, that don't necessarily ring up the local council. What do they want? Because they don't know what to do. They don't know how to do all the things. A lot of people don't understand about councils, but they're the ones that need help like all the rest of us. We've been in a very dark place, and all of us, and I exclude everybody in this chamber, virtual chamber that, it's in a situation we would never know how to deal with. But think about the people who aren't such as us, those that need the help and need a change. Chairman, we need a budget of hope. We need a budget that shows the people of Hampshire the future is going to be different. Sadly, this budget does not deliver that. We of the Liberal Democrats believe in hope, which is what councillor House said. This is not about political. This is about what the people need. And therefore, I cannot support this budget. Thank you, Chairman.
I have councillor Joy next. And according to the hands-up system, he could be our last council member to speak before I return to the principals. So councillor Joy.
Thank you very much, Chairman. I'm really disappointed that so much of the debate, if it is that, that's gone on over the last almost an hour or more, has not actually focused on principally what we were here to debate, and that is actually a specific budget, both revenue and capital. But I shall be supporting the recommendations before us, not just because I believe them to be sound, shrewd, constructive, perceptive and of substance, but because no others have actually been presented. All of our officers have contributed throughout, through commitment and professionalism throughout a challenging year like no other before. But I'm disappointed that yet again, there have been no tangible, reasoned, costed and detailed alternative proposals in the form of recommendations. Our opposition members unquestionably have talent and ability, and I enjoy and continue to enjoy working with them on that basis. So it's a shame that those qualities have not been harnessed in order to develop proposals to put before us today. Councillor House, as leader of the Liberal Democrats, spoke with great use of a Titanic analogy. I'm left with the impression that his perspective is being delivered from an economic iceberg. In the circumstances, our plans to prevent a meltdown could be challenged. We will nevertheless, I am sure, rise to that challenge. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Joy. I call upon the leader, councillor Mans, to respond to the debate. He may wish to produce councillor Reed, if he feels so inclined.
Thank you, Chairman. I think we've had, if my figures are right, over a third of the council speaking during this debate. If nothing else, that's a healthy sign that people are really interested in what we're doing. I hope a number of councils will agree that I can't respond to every single point that was made, but I would just like to respond to a few. First of all, I can assure councillor Frankham, and I'm personally sorry that she's decided not to stand again, that we will have a music department in Hampshire as long as I'm leader. And I hope that's some assurance to councillor Carpenter as well. I think I'd make two other specific points. First of all, councillor House, quite understandably, repeats this mantra about vision and looking forward and having hope. I just think he should read a bit more closely the document that was produced by my predecessor, under the auspices of my predecessor, the 2050 Commission on Vision. The 2050 Commission on Vision for the Future. It's their councillor House. I suggest you read what our vision is. And I have to say, it's not just the Conservative Party's vision. It's a vision of a number of people that were brought together to produce it, including one of his own councillors. The other point I'd make is that alongside that vision, you've got to have the way to practically deal with what's going on day by day. The ability to react sensibly to events, and we've certainly had some pretty significant events over the last year. In other words, you've got to have a council that can and has the ability to react constructively to those events. And I believe you do that by following the advice given to us by councillor Latham, who pointed out that we have, yes, low council tax, the second lowest in the country amongst counties. But also at the same time, high quality services. If you've got high quality services, you're in a better position to actually carry out change, react to events, and that we most certainly have, as a number of councillors have pointed out, in terms of our Ofsted ratings in children's services. And the work that we're doing in adult services with technology of every sort that is transforming the way elderly people are looked after in our county. So I would argue both on a vision and on the practicalities, we have it about right. Yes, there's always more things we can do. And yes, we have to make choices. And yes, it is difficult under the present financial constraints to do just that. But we have made choices. We focused on the environment councillor House. And we got a bit further than just focusing on it and suggesting slogans. What we've actually done is we've got the most, probably the most practical reaction of any county in England to how we solve this problem of climate emergency. We've looked at it thoroughly, we've come up with studies, we've involved the Carbon Trust, as was mentioned by councillor Warwick. And we have now got practical steps, both to reduce our own carbon footprint, that of the council itself. And we're building up a partnership with people across the county in order to actually get others to also look at ways they can do the same. So overall, it's been a difficult budget to put together. But I'm absolutely convinced it's the right one for the times. And therefore I am asking the county to support the recommendations on the agenda on pages 56 and 57 of your agenda papers.
Thank you. I did mention earlier that councillor Reed can speak as well, and he has indicated that he would like to speak. So to answer some technical questions presumably. So councillor Reed.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I just wanted to raise a few points arising from points that had come out of the debate. I have to say that as I was last year, I was disappointed that the Liberal Democrats did not have anything substantive to suggest, either in cabinet, which would have been the best place, or today to modify the budget. We do actually welcome challenge. It makes us think about the decisions that we are making. And if we are able to deploy a good defence of those decisions, it leaves us in a more confident position. And if the opposition say something which is a reasonable point, especially if it's brought up in cabinet, we can be able to introduce those into the budget. But what we had today, I'm afraid, was the weaponisation of the cliche, if I can put it that way. And a cliche is an overused phrase that betrays an absence of thought. And I'm afraid that that sums up the opposition approach to this debate. I'd like to add my best wishes to Jane Frankham and yes, the music service is dear to our hearts. And I'd also like to pick up a point on which Roy Perry started, which was our extra care provision, which is one of the jewels in our crown in Hampshire. And this year, just expanding that a little, the join that we engineered between the National Health Service and our halfway houses and our adult social care to enable people to be discharged from hospital in a timely way, helped not only those people, but also the National Health Service to cope with the huge peak that was thrown at it. Nobody on the opposition was prepared to mention the fact that our children's services department remains one of the most respected departments in the country. And councillor Wade at the end was talking about, we have to do things differently. But actually, when you've got outstanding in all respects, I do question whether that particular cliche is apposite. What we have here is a budget, and I spoke throughout this, my speech, about a budget which is preparing Hampshire for the recovery. Is there anything more important than preparing our economy and our people for the recovery so that we are well positioned to make the best of coming out of the crisis in which we find ourselves? I don't think there is, and I unreservedly commend this budget to the council as unchallenged by the opposition and the only game in town for taking Hampshire forward.
Thank you councillor Reed. In a moment or two, I'm going to ask the chief executive to administer a recorded vote for us. Before I do so, can I check with councillors House, Benison and Frankham that we can take all the recommendations, which are sub paragraphs A to P to M, no, to P, as one block vote?
Yes, chairman, we're happy to vote against them all.
Thank you, Benison.
Yes, chairman, I'm happy with that. Thank you.
Councillor Frankham.
Likewise.
Thank you. And councillor Frankham, once again, everyone has spoken about how well you have served your group and our county over the years. I know that on many occasions, you have struggled in the council chamber through health reasons, but you have always done a very superb job. We wish you the very best.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed.
Thank you. I go now to the chief executive councillor Cotlin, councillor John Cotlin. Before I call him though, can I just say that before this meeting, I had the opportunity to have a short chat to him at elbows distance so that we observed all the social distancing. We've spoken a lot about how well the staff have done during this pandemic period. But right from the very beginning, it required a certain amount of leadership skill and acumen in order to keep everything going via things like Teams and Zoom and all the other non-physical meetings. And this council has not wavered. It has stayed on track. It has done a superb job for the last year. That is due in no small part to the excellent leadership of John Cocklin. And I commend to the council my best wishes and thanks to him, and I would like to make sure that that is minuted. And now I turn over to John Cocklin for the recorded vote. John?
Thank you very much indeed, chairman. I'm a bit nonplussed by that. So thank you very much indeed for those comments which should be shared across all of the senior leadership of the organisation. If any of those comments are minuted, I hope they don't include you referring to me as councillor Cocklin. I'm sure that wouldn't be
I'm so sorry.
appreciated by many of your colleagues. So members, if we may just go through the routine as we do when we're meeting physically for a recorded vote, I'll read through your names and if you could just answer clearly for, against or abstain. And as the chairman has just indicated, this is a single vote across the whole of the budget report. It's items A to M on the revenue report and items N to P on the capital report, all as a single vote, please. So I'll call your name and for, against or abstain, please. Councillor Benison.
For.
Councillor Burkitt. Councillor Burkitt. Councillor Boils.
For.
Councillor Bolton.
For.
Councillor Branson.
For.
Councillor Briggs.
For.
Councillor Brooks.
For.
Councillor Burgess.
For.
Councillor Keru. Councillor Keru. Councillor Carpenter.
For.
Councillor Carter.
For.
Councillor Chad.
For.
Councillor Chegwin.
Against.
Councillor Chowdhury.
For.
Councillor Clark.
Against.
Councillor Collett.
Against.
Councillor Cooper, Mark Cooper.
Against.
Councillor Rod Cooper.
For.
Councillor Craig.
Against.
Councillor Dowden.
Against.
Councillor Edgar.
For.
Councillor Fairhurst.
For.
Councillor Forster.
For.
Councillor Frankham.
Against.
Councillor Gibson.
For.
Councillor Glenn.
For.
Councillor Gryesky.
For.
Councillor Harrison.
Against.
Councillor Harvey.
For.
Councillor Hare.
For.
Councillor Heron.
For.
Councillor Hiscock.
Against.
Councillor Hockley. Councillor House.
Against.
Councillor Hughes.
For.
Councillor Humby.
For.
Councillor Huckstopp.
For.
Councillor Irish.
Against.
Councillor James. Councillor Joy.
For.
Councillor Keest.
For.
Councillor Kemp G.
For.
Councillor Kendall.
Abstain.
Councillor Curl.
Against.
Councillor Latham.
For.
Councillor Mans.
For.
Councillor McAvoy.
For.
Councillor McNair Scott. Sorry, councillor McNair Scott.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Meller.
For.
Councillor Mitchell.
For.
Councillor Macata.
For.
Councillor North.
For.
Councillor Oppenheimer.
For.
Councillor Penman.
For.
Councillor Perry.
For.
Councillor Philpot.
For.
Councillor Porter.
Against.
Councillor Price.
Against.
Councillor Quantrill. Councillor Quantrill.
For.
Thank you. Councillor Reed.
For.
Councillor Simpson.
Against.
Councillor Stalard.
For.
Councillor Still.
For.
Councillor Taylor.
For.
Councillor Tennant.
Against.
Councillor Thacker.
For.
Councillor Thierry.
For.
Councillor Thornton.
Against.
Councillor Todd.
Against.
Councillor Vaughan.
For.
Connie.
Councillor Wade.
Against.
Councillor Warwick.
For.
Councillor Westbrook.
Against.
Councillor White.
For.
Councillor Withers.
For.
Councillor Woodward.
For.
And according to my records, councillor Keru is with us, but he didn't answer. So I'll give councillor Keru one more chance. Councillor Keru.
For.
Thank you very much indeed. Members, we'll just do the tally and be with you in a moment.
John, I think councillor James is with us as well because he unmuted just before you called his name. So there may be a technical problem there.
Right.
I can see it's councillor Hockley, I can see.
So councillor Hockley, you're able to vote, please?
He needs Connie to do his microphone.
And councillor James, could you vote?
Against.
Thank you very much. And councillor Hockley. I think we'll need to move on to the count if that's okay, members, and I think it's
I think you'll have to move on.
Yeah, it's a clear count, I think. So colleagues will do the counts and confirm in just a moment.
I've been handed the vote. In favour, 52, against 21, with one abstention. The recommendations are therefore carried. I move on now to item 11, which is the Hampshire County Council pay statement. The report from the appropriate committee is to be introduced by councillor Stephen Reed.
Thank you, chairman. This is a report that we receive annually. And what the officers do is that they carry forward last year's report with the figures updated. There's nothing of a substantive nature that has changed since the last report. We're obliged to consider this matter by legislation, and I move that we adopt this report.
Thank you councillor Reed. Do any members wish to ask any questions or debate councillor House?
Thank you very much, chairman. And as councillor Reed has said, this is an annual routine piece of business. It's for transparency. And although it's a bit of a shawl that we do it this way, it is right and proper that it's in front of us and available to all the public and residents of Hampshire to see. Whilst speaking, if I can just very briefly get under the wire, because of the way the previous debate was formatted, I wasn't aware of many people saying they were standing down. So I'd like to put on record, on behalf of the Liberal Democrat group, our thanks to all retiring councillors, regardless of party. We get involved in the bandwagon of politics, but actually we're all here for the benefit of residents of Hampshire. And just about every debate we have is basically good natured. It understands the differences of politics and the reasons that we're serving our residents. And you in particular, chairman, over so many years, we've had some great tussles in various formats, but they've always been good natured. And they've always been in that spirit of Bonomi, and I wish you well for the future. And thank you for your very impartial sharing over the course of the last year.
Yes, well, I mean, I have to say that's very kind of you and thank you councillor House. But your assumption is that the electors of Barton and New Milton might not want to return me. Whereas I have a more positive outlook. I think they will return me and so you will see me again, I hope.
I misheard you, chairman. I thought you were standing down.
The wish was farther to the thought, I think. I move on. Are there any who speak against this or can we accept this as a unanimous recommendation?
No.
Agree. We move on. Agreed. The recommendation, I take as standing.
Chairman, we need to hold a vote on this, please. It's a part one item.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I do need you to press your buttons and to vote. I thought we could get away with agreed. The vote icon should appear on the screen any minute. I'll vote for, against, or abstain. I'll vote for, against, abstain. Okay, I have sixty-one votes indicating one hundred percent agreement, the recommendation is carried and I can now move on. Item twelve on the agenda is a review of the Hampshire Mineral Waste Plan. This will be introduced by the leader councillor Keith Mans.
Some of you will remember when the mineral waste plan was first produced some considerable time ago now and there's obviously the opportunity now to review some of the matters in it. And we do that with partners and therefore I would just like the council's approval to the recommendations on page two four nine of the agenda.
Thank you. Any questions on this report? Any debate? councillor Kemp G. councillor Kemp G. It makes interesting reading this and I just wonder chairman whether the leader can confirm that the mineral waste plan will be fit for purpose in supporting emerging government waste management policy which firmly places recycling above incineration in the waste hierarchy. And will you also acknowledge that more incineration in Hampshire way above our strategic needs will only add to more carbon emissions and worse air quality? Before the leader answers we have other speakers with questions councillor Humby.
Yeah, thank you mister chairman, I'd just like to make a few points specifically thanking the officer team that have done this. It's it's it looks like a simple report but an enormous amount of work that goes into preparing this. And of course we do that in partnership with our colleagues at Southampton Portsmouth and the two national parks. This is something that we have to review every five years to line up the national planning policy framework policy. And we did that originally two thousand and thirteen, we had a brief review in thirteen and twenty, so now this is updating on some of those issues. But I would like to say it's absolutely essential that we have an up-to-date plan and that is in terms of planning decision and then it actually helps us protect us from planning by appeal. I'd also like to say having mentioned the officers that put it together that we do have considerable experience of the team within it. And that experience and those skills and it enables us to retain that and indeed we are now using those skills and preparing plans for other authorities. So it's really just to congratulate the team mister chairman, thank you.
Thank you councillor Collet.
Thank you chairman, I just support the recommendations, I just wanted to say that having seen through a previous update of the Hampshire Minerals and Waste Plan back in the nineteen nineties and chaired that process. I do recognise how challenging this whole process is but equally the vital importance of having a plan in place so that we keep some control over what is done and not be driven by operators developers by what suits them, doing that on behalf of the people of Hampshire just as Hart District Council are doing with their housing allocations, thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Latham. Thank you chairman, can I urge everybody on the council to look at the recommendations and hopefully approve them? There is a need for this plan quite urgently, the original plan goes back to two thousand and thirteen and we did have a slight review in two thousand and eighteen which did pick out certain items which needed looking into. Mainly supply with in conjunction with sand and gravel and it was then agreed that we would have a full review in two thousand and twenty. We have to get the consent of the other four authorities to implementing the plan but we have to have an updated plan which complies with government policy firstly and enable us to have a the ability to deliver minerals and waste over the period of the plan. So that's the purpose of the plan, it needs a review in particular because the wording's changed. There's been a raft of government policies over the last eighty years which all need to be taken now into consideration. And so all of that needs to be considered and the report indicates where the report where that will take place. I identify climate change as a particular item because in fact there's only a one paragraph in the existing plan and we need far more to develop that within our new plan. We also need to review the amount of minerals and waste that which we annually have to produce to comply with updated legislation, so we need to look into that, we may need to we'll need to look into other sites which need to come on to stream. So all of these things will form part of the plan and on the basis that it all starts next week in March two thousand and twenty-one. In fact, as we go through the review, the final plan isn't programmed to come into effect until October two thousand and twenty-three. So it's two years off if we start now, so can I urge everybody to support the implementation of this review so that we can get on with it, thank you. Thank you councillor Porter followed by councillor Simpson.
Thank you chairman, I support this the principle of this going forward, I think it's something that we've been kept up to date with very well over the last few years. And I'd just like to raise a couple of questions, one, as a cabinet member at Winchester, I was interested in paragraph I think it's thirty-three about budgetary arrangements. It's it describes the cost of it being eight hundred and sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty pounds and it says that there will be two hundred and sixty-one pounds three hundred and sixty distributed that cost distributed among costs partner partner authorities. And I just wondered if we could have any clear description of where that money is coming from. And the second thing is that will this include a conversation about the role of project Integra going forward? And finally, what role does the council think that seabed minerals and gravels will take as part of our extraction systems as well as our recycled materials? And will this be part of the conversation that we'll be having nationally as well as locally?
Thank you councillor Simpson followed by councillor Heron. Thank you mister chairman, I first went through this with yourself some years ago when you were chairing it and it was an excellent process then. It's a continuing process, it will go ahead and be done once again in five or six years' time as it should be. We should always be looking at our policies and be willing to change them in the light of new information, please just support it. councillor Heron followed by councillor Perry.
Chairman, I didn't really intend to speak on this initially but I did want to say something that I'm sure all members are aware of but perhaps is useful for anyone who is viewing this meeting. Just to say how important this document is not just for the municipal waste of Hampshire which project Integra and other issues deal with but this is our ability to shape and determine how all waste in Hampshire is dealt with. And obviously a vast amount of waste produced in Hampshire is dealt with by private firms, the commercial business, the building waste as councillor Porter mentioned used in aggregates and this is actually a very important document that ties in with our environmental strategy. So I do commend this review, much has moved since it was last well first written and last reviewed. And it does raise lots of interesting questions that we obviously cannot deal with here today and the issue of C1 aggregates was raised but of course that is a massive issue not just to see the impact of pegging them but also the walls that allow them to be delivered. So I this is a mammoth process and perhaps I can leave state a little bit on the partners as this is a combined document. I'm sure councillor Humby will say that the two cities and the two national parks will equally have to contribute towards its production and I assume that is where the partner funding comes from.
councillor Perry.
Thank you mister chairman, I make a very, very brief comment on this and I think it's obviously is a very important subject and waste is something that we have to deal with and we certainly want to recycle as much as we possibly can and to avoid putting in into landfill and that's why I think Hampshire's energy from waste plants have served us very well in the past but it's crucial of course that we're absolutely satisfied that where energy from waste plants operate that there are no emissions from them that could cause any problems at all, so I think that is important. I equally accept representing the Romsey area that minerals can only be won where they exist and I'm very conscious that there are gravel deposits in the Romsey area. I have thought and this might be a zany idea but I want to leave it with the county in getting sand would we do well as a nation to consider whether we could import sand from those areas, maybe the Sahara Desert where there's lots of it and there wouldn't be the same environmental damage as could be done in England's green and pleasant land. I'm not suggesting for one moment that we export our waste but I think where we could perhaps get minerals at an economic price we ought at the very least to look at that before we start exploiting the greenfields of Hampshire.
Thank you councillor Perry. There being no other requests, I now return to the leader to answer some of the questions, points made and to put the recommendation when he is ready. Mute, unmute.
I've got your I've got your complaints, have to die chairman.
Called on, Zeez.
Yes, councillor Kemp G's point, I think is a very good one, the fact is the government have yet to sort this matter out. We are just based upon the we're basing this review on what is the policy at the moment but quite clearly quite clearly this may change in the next few months, I've made personal.
I'm sorry, could you all please mute your microphones while the leader is speaking?
I've made a personal representation to the then secretary of state for therefore some time ago on this matter. So at the moment we're stuck where we are, we must carry on with the review as far as I can see councillor Kemp G. But at the same time take account of future government decisions on this matter particularly in regard to emissions from from energy waste to energy plants. As regards the the sharing of the cost as I understand it and I'm certain that councillor Humby can give more detail outside this meeting that the amount mentioned is shared between ourselves and the unitaries. And I'd also add if there are any other more detailed comments again, I'm certain councillor Humby will be able to look into those outside this meeting. And on that basis I reckon I would ask that the recommendations be approved by the council.
Thank you councillor Mans, the recommendations paragraph A and B taken together are on page two hundred and forty-nine. You need to vote again so wait for the icon to appear and then please press your vote accordingly. Thank you, I have over sixty votes all in favour with two ups with one abstention I think, the recommendations are therefore carried. I move now to item thirteen which is a notice of motion submitted correctly in accordance with standing order eighteen point one by councillor Harrison to be seconded by councillor Todd. I understand that this motion is acceptable to the major group, the administration group as well. So councillor Harrison if you would like to speak to your motion and then if councillor Todd would like to speak as well he can of course as a second deferral his speech but it might be that we can get through this fairly quickly. So it is going to be up to councillor Harrison and councillor Todd. Now, do any members wish to make any points in respect of any notice that they may have in respect of a declaration of interest?
Please chairman, I have raised my hand, I'm not sure if you can see.
councillor North.
Thank you, I'd just like to declare a DPI through my employment with Theresa Coffee MP so I will leave the meeting now and await to be let back in when you're finished, thank you very much.
Thank you, I have councillor Mans.
Yes, thank you chairman, I just want to reiterate what you've what you've said that the Conservative group will be sporting this motion and I can also tell council that as regards the particular part of the motion that relates directly to me in terms of writing to the chancellor and the secretary of state for work and pensions that I've already done that, thank you.
Thank you councillor Mans for that update, now I give councillor Harrison the opportunity.
Thank you chairman, the support of the ruling group is very welcome. The motion is not unique to Hampshire and we're not pretending that this is the case. The issue of supporting carers of course is a national one but we of course have the responsibility of supporting Hampshire carers. I like to think that this isn't a single party issue, I've often heard Conservative councillors here talk about their respect and understanding of the critically important job that carers do. Many of us went through the experience on the Health and Adult Social Care Scrutiny Committee a while back when we were faced with the proposal to act acts a respite centre and that caused much distress to many carers who came and talked to the committee explaining what they have to do on a daily basis, how the caring role can completely dominate their lives and the impact it has on their economic, social and health wellbeing. I know that the chancellor and the secretary of state won't look to see whether this was a Liberal Democrat or a Conservative inspired motion, they're both very busy people and they and they will of course be the final decision makers. If enough local authorities and MPs lobby them in a similar way then there is a chance that unpaid carers will get a little bit more support and chairman who could begrudge them that, thank you.
councillor Todd, do you want to speak now?
I'd rather reserve my right to speak later towards the end of the debate but thank you for the opportunity.
The debate is now open. Hands up.
Thank you chairman, I I fully support this motion councillor Harrison, you might be surprised to hear. But what I thought I'd like to do is just talk to the members for just a couple of minutes to say what we're doing for carers during the pandemic. We've worked very closely with carers organisations to target sport and mitigate the negative impacts we have. We have a carers bronze group set up as part of HCC Emergency Planning Response. This has remained active throughout and we can. part of HCC Emergency Planning Response. This has remained active throughout, and we continue to work closely with the Hampshire Carers Partnership Board. With day services, where day services have had to close or reduce activity, our community teams have worked with service users and carers just to check their wellbeing and to ensure they know what support is available. We're working very closely and directly with Andover Mind, the Princess Royal Trust for Carers and Carers Together, among others. Up till the 15th of February this year, we have awarded £220,000 in grants to carers for help with technology, equipment or personal care. And we're also enabling live out carers to have access to PPE. This is all in addition to our normal work with carers, which will continue long after the pandemic. And the other thing I'd just like to say, members, on the first bit E, many carers are unaware of their entitlement to financial support and a carer's assessment of break and support services. Can I just say, it is incredibly difficult to identify carers sometimes. And certainly about 18 months ago, I think we brought it up at the Health and Wellbeing Board and suggested to GPs that they ask someone, the standard question is, are you a carer? And a lot of older people will say no, because they don't think of themselves as a carer. They're looking after their partner, their husband, their wife, because that's what you do. And they don't want to be identified as a carer. And the other thing is, if you offer some older people a carer's assessment, which is the terminology we use, their hands go up in horror. They think we're assessing their ability to care for the person they're looking after. So we have to be really careful about our language, and we have to make a real effort to try and get out there and find out the people who are caring, but don't ourselves identify as carers. Thank you chairman.
Thank you councillor Fairhurst. Before I call the next speaker, I need to go back to councillor Todd. From a technical point of view, you do need to second the motion so we can debate.
Yes, I do absolutely second the motion, needless to say. Thank you very much indeed, Mr Chairman.
Thank you. Councillor Stalard, followed by councillor Porter.
Thank you very much chairman. The motion makes reference to young carers in paragraphs 1D and again in 3C. So with your agreement, I would like to just to spend a few seconds very briefly outlining those measures which the County Council already takes to support our young carers. We do give, we have a budget of £165,000, which is allocated annually to support our young carers. And specialist support and advice has been continued to be provided to those young carers during the Covid crisis. And we had just under 1,400 children who accessed those services at any one time during the month of December last alone. Together with the Hampshire Young Carers Alliance, which is funded by Hampshire County Council, we have also provided workshops for young carers and their families. And those workshops have included mindfulness, mental health and wellbeing, Tai Chi, how to deal with anxiety, stress and so on. We have also delivered, or the Carers Alliance have also delivered other online activities throughout lockdown. And we also made contact with the schools to support their education, to make sure that they have access to education, where for some that might have been rather problematic. We have done everything that we can to make sure that those young people have been able to access and continue with their education, including the supply of laptops or iPads. So a great deal of work has been done and continues to be done. This is not just an initiative for Covid. I would also like to comment on 3C, which says, the motion says, we will promote Young Carers Action Day on March 16th of this year. And that used to be known as Young Carers Awareness Day. They've changed it this year to be Action Day, but we have always acknowledged it. And it is in our cons programme, our communications programme, to do the same again this year. So just to let members be aware that we already do do a lot to support our young carers, and we will go on doing so in the future. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Thank you councillor Porter.
It's very pleasing to follow councillor Stalard, actually, because I was going to talk about exactly the same thing. And I was just going to point out that councillor Fairhurst mentioned that many older people don't recognise themselves as carers. And I think that's true for many younger people too. And I have somebody in my family who hasn't been recognised, hasn't recognised themselves as a young carer until we pointed it out. And the Young Carers Alliance, I was really pleased to say, I'm pleased to hear, when we were making decisions about funding services for young people, that despite the youth services work being ceased in funding, the young carers money was continued. And I think that's very, very worthwhile and definitely needed doing. But I'd just like to acknowledge that actually many youth groups that do work with young people do exactly what councillor Fairhurst was talking about with young people. They recognise young carers within those communities of young people who don't necessarily recognise themselves as young carers. And I'd just like that to be considered by the County Council. And I know that schools are also very good at finding that out too. But it's something that we do have to think about when doctors, also GPs, might not just think about young people as being young carer, but think of older people as carers too. So perhaps it's an awareness for the GP service to be considerate of the needs of carers of all ages. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Porter. And there are no more speakers, so I call upon the second of the motion councillor Todd.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. And I have to confess that after two days of somewhat fractious debate, it is very good that we are all able to come together and agree on this and express our common concern for the carers in Hampshire, the unpaid carers that we have in Hampshire. It's very easy to talk about our differences, and it's nice occasionally to be reminded of our communalties and common interest. We talk a lot at this council rightly about our own adult social care services, and it's important to not to undervalue how much and how vital the provision of unpaid care is. Carers UK has done an assessment that the value of unpaid care provided during the pandemic is £135 billion, an absolutely astronomical number. But we shouldn't look at it purely in financial terms, as people, as other speakers have rightly said. Those are all individuals who, if we are to believe the Carers UK research, have been under tremendous pressure during the process of Covid. As was referred, it's been harder for them in many cases to achieve support or have respite. 81% of carers in a Carers UK study have taken on more care. 63% of carers have worried about, of unpaid carers have worried about how they're going to cope financially. I was particularly grateful to councillor Fairhurst for outlining the different ways that Hampshire County Council support carers. And it was a particular delight that she made reference to the challenge of identification on this. I would declare a personal but non prejudicial interest in that the organisation, of which I'm chief executive, produced a report with Carers, Carers Trust as they were called then, in 2014, called Husband Partner Dad Son Carer, which highlighted the fact that firstly, that male carers are around 40% of unpaid carers, not something that is well known, but also that a very large proportion of themselves, and I'm sure this is true for women as well, do not recognise themselves, do not acknowledge themselves to be a carer, which means that they do not always access the support that they need, whether it's in the workplace, in the home or from statutory bodies. So I'm extremely pleased that councillor Fairhurst acknowledged that. The motion also rightfully highlighted the important role of young carers. And it was also very welcome that councillor Stalard acknowledged that and that councillor Porter also talked about the importance of the support we provide to that particular group. And how can I not go on without mentioning that one of our primary calls on the leader of the council, which was that he should write a letter to the Chancellor of Exchequer to hear that it has already been done in response to this motion being raised is a particular item that we're pleased about. And let us hope that the cross party approach being taken by this council has the resulting and desired effect. So I would like to thank councillors on all sides for their expressed support. I'd like to thank for their expressed support for this motion. It is, I hope, going to be something that we can support unanimously, to send the strongest possible view that we as a group, as a collective group of councillors representing people right across the county, strongly support the extra funding that we call for in this motion and the other actions that are outlined, and that this will be taken into account by the government at the upcoming budget.
Thank you councillor Todd. Councillor Harrison, do you wish to reply to the debate?
Chairman, there's nothing of any value that I could add to what's being said, so no.
Thank you. Well, now we're going to vote on this electronically again. And the recommendation is that we accept this notice of motion, and it's all out on pages 261 and 262. So when the icon comes on the screen, do you please vote for or against? The motion has been carried, but I'm waiting to see if it's unanimous.
I'm just about to finish, so I'd like to see it before then.
Mind members to please mute. We have one abstention, otherwise every single member has voted for this. I have not abstained. I believe this is a motion which the council would wish me to agree on and to put to the government as a unanimous motion from this council. Thank you. We move on then to for two items for information.
Chairman, do we need to invite councillor North back into the room?
Oh, thank, thank you very much.
Did confirm, I'll do that for you chairman.
All those who were excluded, please do re-include yourselves, if there is such a word. Okay, going back on then to item 14A, the report from the, sorry, questions to the fire authority, and then B and C, the report, both of the shadow and the authority itself. And I have no doubt that the chairman councillor Chris Carter will also give us an update on current matters. So over to you, councillor Carter.
Thank you very much, chairman. Chairman, yes, with your permission, I'll just make a brief statement if I may. Members, chairman, members, you may have seen a recent press comment. I saw it in the Daily Telegraph. I don't know whether it was in other, other newspapers, but it was very critical of fire services across the UK for lack of volunteer support, specifically referring to the vaccination programme. Members, I think it is important that I reassure you that this does not apply to Hampshire or indeed the Isle of Wight. Members, I alerted you at the last meeting, last meeting, that Basingstoke Fire Station had been selected as a vaccination centre. That duly happened earlier this year, and I can advise you that there's currently around 1,000 vaccinations taking place a day at Basingstoke Fire Station, which remains fully operational as a fire station. But of course, it's not just Basingstoke that things are happening. More widely across, across Hampshire, there are currently 10 volunteer vaccinators. There are four on the island, and a significant number of staff are training at the moment to be vaccinators. And more locally in Southampton, Redbridge Fire Station has become the hub location for the surge testing that is needed, door to door testing that needs to take place because of the South African variant that was detected in Southampton. Also, a number of firefighters are detached, providing driving support for South Central ambulance. I think there are about 12 in Hampshire and seven on the island, providing ambulance support there. Further, there are at the moment 27 members of Hampshire firefighting staff detached to provide in hospital support to the intensive care units. And the remain, the remain volunteers providing support for the Grayson facility that sadly is needed to deal with the transportation of bodies. Additionally, the fire service is providing support to Hampshire Constabulary with the fitting of masks within the custody suites. And on a more general note, the fire service led by Neil Oden, the chief officer, remains providing support to the Hampshire and Isle of Wight LRF. A wide range of support. The level of volunteers providing the support has been incredible. And I think it is important here, chairman, that I include, I mentioned that I include all the firefighters, including retained firefighters, the control staff and all the support staff. And that includes the administration support that is coming from Hampshire County Council. Members, I, I would like to emphasise on behalf of Hampshire Fire Rescue Authority, and place on record our pride and appreciation to the Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire Services for going the extra mile. Now, I appreciate we've already had mention of the extra mile earlier this morning, and it is, it is a bit of a cliche, but I can't think of any other term that I can use to recognise the scale of volunteering that there has been and continues. And it has a prospect for being in that situation for well over a year. So chairman, I, I would like that brief statement that I've made there to be recorded, if it can, because I think it is important. And I hope all members will join me in recognising what a splendid fire service we have here in Hampshire and on the Isle of Wight. Thank you chairman. Now, I turn to the minutes. 14B is Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority, 14C Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue or Shadow Authority. The only point I'd like to make with the minutes is 14B confirms that on the 10th of February this year, that authority, which was formulated 24 years ago, the 10th of February was its last meeting. And I'd just like to add that it's been an honour and privilege for me to serve as chairman of that authority for the past six years. Members, the minutes are before you. I have nothing further to add. I'm quite happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Carter. Questions, debate? I have none, so.
Yes, please.
Councillor Edgar.
Yes, thank you very much. Sorry to, to this last.
Sorry to come to this last one, the meeting I've been to. I think it's 18 years I've been to watching them all that time. Just to say what a brilliant job Chris Carter, I should declare that as an interest because he's a local councillor with me and the work he's done with the Hampshire and Rescue Authority. It's been a really challenging time for everybody, and I'd just like to register that at the county. Could I just very quickly say this is because I had a problem when I was doing the item 13, and you won't be able to change it now, but when I actually take those lines, they go into different dodges for me at the top, and I recall the abstent, and I had no intention of doing that, and it was for me at that time. This is after having terrible problems, having had a stroke. So it's just to say that I know you can't change it, but I was actually for that subject. Sorry to take that bit of time.
We will, in submitting the documentation, we will make the point that it was unanimous. So that's fine, councillor Edgar.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm very pleased about that. I didn't want after about 18 years and make a mistake on one, on the last one. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you. Now, I have councillor Philpot, followed by councillor Thornton, and then councillor Chedwin. So councillor Philpot.
Yes, thank you very much, chairman. And not for the first time, my friend councillor Peter Edgar has taken the words out of my mouth. Can I just add my thanks and appreciation for my friend and colleague councillor Chris Carter for everything that he's done as chairman of the Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority? And the fact that the HFRA is going to be no more as of the end of next month, and I know that Chris is standing down, stepping down from the county council after years of exemplary service and on this job for the last six years. And at a time when I would say without a question, it's probably been the most challenging and controversial time for fire authorities throughout the country following the tragedy at Grenfell. And I think for Chris and what he's done in Hampshire, it's been, he's done a magnificent job in keeping us informed and chairing the authority. So thank you very much, Chris, for everything you've done.
Councillor Thornton, followed by councillor Chedwin.
I just wondered, is it appropriate, is it okay for this council to record a vote of thanks to all our Hampshire firefighters, the Hampshire Fire Service, not only for the work that they've done during the pandemic, but for the work they normally do, but especially for all the extra work they've been doing and volunteering for? Are we allowed to do that?
Well, your comments will be included in the minutes, and I don't think there's anyone who's going to say anything against that. But I'm not going to go through voting and so on. Councillor Chedwin.
Thank you, chairman. I'm very pleased that Chris Carter mentioned the voluntary work that the firemen have done and the support they've given to other emergency services during the pandemic, because I think sometimes when people thank rightly the NHS and essential services, they perhaps sometimes forget the firemen. And knowing Gospot as Chris does, the members of staff at Gospot Fire Station have really backed up right across the board. I'd also mention GAFAs, the Inshore Rescue Service, who again have really played their part as well. Chairman, it's unusual to have a great loving between the Conservatives and Liberal Democrats from Gospot.
We should have a heart.
Yeah, it's the trend to be encouraged perhaps, but I'd like to join councillor Philpot paying credit to Chris Carter. You know, I've had a few differences over the years, particularly when he gets a lot of postcards through his letterbox, but he has been actually a first-class councillor and a first-class servant to the fire service and will be missed. He's also actually, when he's not losing his temper at me, he's actually a very nice guy, so I personally will be sorry to see him go. And with your indulgence, chairman, can I just briefly as well thank Peter Edgar? Because Peter did a huge amount in the education world on this council, and I won't have another chance to thank him for that and pay tribute. We all know he's had some health issues. I was so pleased that he was able to come back here. But Peter has given largest part of his adult life to serve in the community in Gospot, both on Gospot Borough and Hampshire County, and I'd certainly like to place on record my sincere thanks to him and wish him hopefully a very long and enjoyable and hopefully reasonable health retirement as well. Both those individuals have been excellent councillors and despite our occasional political difficulties, I did just want to make that clear and wish them both well for the future. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, and so say all of us, I think. Councillor Chad.
Thank you, chairman. I just want to take the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Hampshire Fire Rescue Authority in expressing our sincere thanks to Chris for all of his hard work over the last six years as chairman of the fire authority. There is no doubt that we wouldn't be in the position that we're in now as an authority if it wasn't for him being the driving force behind a lot of that. He has done, worked wonders for the community in regards to his chairmanship, and we are truly thankful for everything that he has done for that authority. Thank you.
Councillor Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to echo Rosie's thanks, but also to our firefighters who have done such a wonderful job. Many of them are already volunteers. I think I'm the second longest-serving member of the fire authority, but we have firefighters that go out to a regular job, they then come back, they're volunteering to put out fires in their spare time, and now they're also volunteering to drive ambulances, to drive the first responder vehicles. They are doing such a tremendous job, and we should be so thankful that within Hampshire we have this great team of Hampshire Fire and Rescue Authority, which will soon include the Isle of Wight, where they are 100% retained firefighters, or on-call, as we now call them. So again, great thanks to all of them and to all those involved.
Thank you. So this report is then duly noted from the chairman of the fire authority. We go now on to item 15.
Chairman, can I comment briefly?
Who is that?
It is councillor Carter.
Oh, sorry, councillor Carter, yes, certainly.
Yes. Chairman, just to thank members who have spoke about myself. Thank you. I can't, I didn't make notes on all that was said there, but councillor Chedwin mentioned the postcard. Gospot members will be aware of the postcard. I'll just advise councillor Chedwin, I still have the postcards. And in my retirement, I have around between 800 and 900 postcards came through my letterbox. I've been thinking of making some artistic creation with them. I still do have all of them, so watch out, there may be something coming with the postcards, but I don't want any more postcards, thank you. You always denied that you sent me the postcards, but now I think you've admitted publicly that you did so. So nothing else to add, chairman. Thank you.
All right. Enough, enough. Item 15. This is a report from the Conduct Advisory Panel, and the chairman of the panel is councillor Mark Kemp-Gee. Councillor Kemp-Gee, if you'd like to introduce this report.
Thank you, chairman. Yes, it falls to me to present this report on behalf of the Members' Credit Conduct Panel. I have nothing to add to it, chairman, but would be pleased to answer any questions arising. Thank you, chairman.
Are there any questions? The report is then noted. Go on to item 16. Executive and Committee Reports. The first one is from the leader for the cabinet, item 16A, councillor Lams.
Thank you, chairman. I have nothing to add to the contents of the reports. Item 16A, I hope councillor Porter in particular will be pleased about the comments about school streets, which, as you know, we're getting on with. So I'm obviously very happy to answer any questions.
Well, and on cue, councillor Porter. Councillor Porter.
I find my finger dries up after sitting here for so long, and it doesn't work on the button. Thank you. And I was just going to say thank you very much on 16A. I'm going to be watching that with interest, obviously, as the time goes on and have heard some conversations with the team. I just wanted to go on and talk about 16B in a minute, chairman, when you're ready.
We'll wait, if you'll hang on a moment. If that's the end of 16A, I will then go on to 16B and ask councillor Patricia Stelod to introduce this report.
Yes, thank you, chairman. This is a report, a very brief report, which reports on the spend of the Covid winter grant, which we received, for 2.89 million. I don't plan to go into detail because I've already responded in some detail earlier today with a question, but I'm happy to take questions.
Councillor Porter.
Thank you. I was very pleased to see Hampshire County Council take action after the agonising delay on the government decision-making over the autumn half terms. It's really good to see this programme going forward and the Winter Covid Grant Programme targeted not just free school meals, but obviously everybody that was felt to be in need as well. And I'd just like to take this opportunity to make sure that people understand who gets a free school meal. It's something that I know that the officers know I'm passionate about, and many people that think that families who are on universal credit automatically get free school meals, but you don't. You only get free school meals if your family earns less than about £600, £620 or pounds. If you earn over £620 a month, you don't get a free school meal. And this was set by government some time ago after the introduction of universal credit. I think they realised how many people took universal credit. And so it's a very small, you have to earn a very small amount when you're entitled to free school meals. As a result, the schemes for the Connect for Communities in the summer don't necessarily tick that box, and I just really applaud the fact that the county council did something about that in the winter scheme and wonder if there's anything that can be done in the summer scheme that could perhaps make that rather easier for those schemes to deliver. Thank you.
Councillor Stelod.
Thank you, chairman. We are currently preparing for the summer scheme, right? But I think to summarise briefly, what our intention is that any child who is in need will be supported. So we will do our best to work very closely with schools in the first instance, then with other local charities and organisations who are supplying those organised activities. All those activities in the summer holidays will in fact have meals attached to them. They will be free meals for those who are eligible for free school meals, but where there is a need, for example, we might classify them as just about managing people, those who are just about managing on the border. If there is a genuine need, then we need to be aware of it, they need to flag it up to us, and we will make sure that no child goes without, no child will go hungry.
That's very heartening, councillor Stelod.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, we go on to item 16C, which is Education Skills, the report from councillor Roz Chad.
Thank you, chairman. I'm pleased to present this Part Two report in regards to the extension of Samuel Cody's Specialty Sports College and I can take any questions.
No questions, no debate. Thank you, the report is noted. The next one is 16D, Adult Social Care and Health. Councillor Liz Fairhurst.
Thank you, chairman. Pleased to report this with Part Two item and happy to take questions.
Any questions? Any debate? Thank you. We go on to, the vote's noted, we go on to item 16E from Recreation, Heritage, Countryside and Rural Affairs, councillor Edward Heron to present this.
Chairman, pleased to present the report, happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions or debate? I think we have a question coming. Trying to find out where the hand is. It's councillor Thecker.
It's me, chairman. I'd like to ask a question on the report 1.2. There are existing, as that paragraph notes, there is an existing community network library. It mentions longer-term sources of support. I wondered if the executive member could give some detail on what that is, because the existing network is impacted by loss of funding and have been worried about what that support is going to take, what form that support is going to take. And I'm picking up bad habits from the Lib Dems. I'd like to slip in a request that there's some commitment for the continuation of the Parish Linksman Scheme. Thank you.
Councillor Keast.
Thank you, chairman. The question is regarding contact with the countryside during the pandemic. I've written to them about two months ago asking for identification of a piece of land. I haven't even had a reply. Are they not replying to any mail at all at the moment?
If there are no further questions or debate, I'll ask councillor, sorry, hold on, there's one more. Councillor Porter, ubiquitous.
Thank you. I'm not sure if that's good or bad. Anyway, thank you, chairman. My question is about rights of way. They have been very muddy this year, as has already been mentioned, but we particularly have rights of way which go into schools, and they are becoming part of school routes. And I'm particularly asking that the county council considers those rights of way as being suitable for school routes into school. I know that councillor Woodward has raised one, and I've certainly raised one another, and really want to see that the rights of way department can actually think very seriously about what sort of surface those should have to make them fit for school routes. Thank you.
So councillor Heron, it falls upon you to answer those points, and that will probably conclude our meeting, because then I will say we've noted it. But then I want to just make a brief statement at the end. So councillor Heron, would you like to answer those points that have been made?
Chairman, I'll try and take them in reverse order. First of all, I'll take councillor Porter's, and as she is aware, our network has taken considerably additional traffic over the rights of way during the successive lockdowns and restrictions, adding that particularly in clement weather and the mud. And I do recognise that problem and the impact that it has particularly in those routes. We are working to try and address it, and we will have to look and see if any additional funding can be available, made available. I would also just highlight the ongoing work, and perhaps an email to councillor Humby might help, on the local cycling and walking infrastructure plans. That is a very useful piece of work because it does encompass how we move people around by alternative means and include looking at both the highways and the rights-of-way networks. Councillor Keast, if he would like to email me, I'll look into that matter. Councillor Thecker, there is more information within the report. There are also established networks of independent libraries that have access to funding, and I'm happy to meet with you and discuss those in particular. I would just take this opportunity to highlight that there are, five grants have been issued as part of the library transformation process. We are expecting and have other applications, and I'm pleased to say that all but one of the libraries that we transitioned into independent libraries has come forward with a community group to take that forward. Thank you, chairman.
Thank you, well. Thank you, members, for helping us get through a very difficult and long agenda today. I've been in this seat now for four and three-quarter hours. I know that doesn't beat the record of the parliamentary speaker, but I can assure you, sitting in one place and looking at the screen for four and three-quarter hours is quite a lot of time. I want to just say a quick word to all those who are not standing at the election. We have mentioned some of them. I don't know all of them, but I do know that in my 24 years on this council, I will have spoken to, for, against and with you on numerous occasions. I wish you all well in the future. I apologise absolutely for any offence I caused to any member during that period of time, so please don't sue me. And, you know, go out and enjoy your life. That's the important thing. We've got a new lease of life now, go out and enjoy it. To those who are standing for election, good luck, be fair, be fair in your comments about your opponents, and I hope and I wish you all the best as well in your election. And I hope and I wish you all the best as well in your election. Now, thank you. That concludes my comments. I'm now going to leave the meeting and allow you guys to say whatever you want to say when I'm not present. Goodbye and good luck.